We'll have you all take a seat, please. Good evening, welcome to City of Lincoln City City Council Meeting for Monday, June 11th, 2018 at 6:00 PM. If you wish to speak on an agenda or non-agenda item, please sign up at the sheet near the entrance door to the council chambers. You'll be called to speak during the public comments section. Comments or testimony on agenda items listed under public hearing, public comment will be taken at that time. Roll call, please.
Dick Anderson.
Yes.
Riley Hoagland.
Here.
Deanna Hinton.
Here.
Judy Casper.
Here.
Susan Walkie.
Here.
And Mayor Don Williams.
Here. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all so much. The council, I need to let you know, I've got a ridiculous amount of requests and changes here. Under H4, Resolution 201806 is not a resolution but a hearing, and I need to move that to...
No, it's not a hearing, but it's a resolution.
Excuse me, thank-- yes, resolution, thank you, not a hearing, resolution. I need to move that to J10 or 11, or would make it 11. If that's alright with everybody? Okay. And then five and six are hearings, seven is a hearing, eight is going to be a public comment. That's 201810, a resolution setting forth water sewer rates, we need to take public comment at that time. And Resolution 201812 is also a public hearing. Or I'll ask for that. Richard, yeah?
Will we consider the resolution right after the public hearing, or will...
I think we can, or we can lump them all down in under J, but I don't think there's any issue, Mr. Appicello, resolution after the hearing?
Yeah, your order of proceedings allows you to do the resolution immediately after the hearing if you wish.
Okay, thanks. And then, Mr. Townsend would like to share something about the two applications to the Department of Land Conservation and Development, right near the city manager, city attorney report. And what else did I have? I think that was it. Yes?
I have a question about number 12, if we-- if there's any way we could move that up further.
Oh, the public interview, public appointment. Willing to listen to opinions on that.
It seems like we've been doing it lately, so yeah.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
I don't know where you'd like to put it.
Be after three?
After three, what?
G3.
G3. Thank you. That work for everyone?
Sure.
Yes.
Okay. How many interviews do we have, every people?
Two.
Okay, so we don't need to bring tables and mics and all that?
Uh-uh.
Okay. Anything else? Alright, we're rolling then. Consent agenda, regular meeting minutes of special meeting, May 7th, 2018, 6:00 PM, and OLCC Commission, or Oregon Leadership Control Commission, excuse me, application for on-premise commercial license grill on 1646 LLC.
I need to pull number one.
Anyone else? Got a motion?
Mr. Mayor, move to approve consent items consisting of number two?
Second.
Motion, second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Counselor Walkie?
In the minutes it identifies me as remote, I may have not been-- I don't know what that meant, but I was here and present, I watched the video, and you could see me there. I don't think remote's appropriate. There were lots of typos on the first and third pages, and I've submitted those to the city manager. But other than that, I would move to approve the minutes of the special meeting of May 7th, 2018.
Second.
Motion, second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay or no? Hearing none, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
If we could let Mr. Clanton know he's the applicant for that.
Oh.
Yeah, just since he's here.
Oh, okay, we've moved you up.
Means you've passed. The motion carried, you're on, yeah.
You're good to go.
Oh, for the grill, I'm so sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, that's you, you're good to go. So you can stick around and enjoy the festivities, or take off, it's all good.
Painless.
Do it, thank you. Counsel deliberations, nothing. Comments from citizens present on agenda, non-agenda items. I don't have a sign-up sheet. Anyone sign up to speak? Folks, feel free, come on forward. Go ahead, come on up, folks. One or two, or I don't know if you're together. And you may choose either seat. All we ask is to give us your name, you don't need any more information, and the microphones move so they stay close so we can hear you.
My name's Carol Kofel. Is that too close?
It's great.
I live at 670 Southwest 24th Drive in Lincoln City. We have lived at this address for over 15 years, and it has only been the last few years that we have had neighbor problems. We have two neighbors, south of us, one is a VRD, one is not, whom refuse to remove, pick up their waste from their dogs. The VRD owner lets this other neighbor's dog use their backyard as a toilet. This backyard is approximately, anywhere from 15 to 30, or it could be as many as 12 to 30, I don't go back there to measure it. We have asked them both repeatedly, politely, for well over a year, to please clean up after their dogs, that's all we ask. One neighbor turns his back on us and walks away. Or sometimes they'll spread the dog waste around, fertilizer, they say, and then put weeds over the piles. Code enforcement officer, Grabenhorst, and Weston Pritz for the VRD department tell us there is nothing that they can do. No city codes for animal waste removal on private property. The smell and the flies are so bad, we cannot open our back windows, nor can we sit out on our back deck. We approved the Olivia Beach subdivision, which one of these houses, both of these houses are in. Not knowing houses would be advertised as potential vacation rentals. We know of at least three families that have moved because of this. No one wants to sit outside, trying to barbecue in the summertime, or even in the winter, on your own property, and all you see and hear are dogs barking, as many as four and five at a time, and taking a dump, to be perfectly honest. Sometimes dogs are in this yard barking from 6:00 AM and as late as 11:00 PM. In this particular instance, I contacted the HOA of Olivia Beach. I was told there is nothing they can do. First of all, they told me it was in their code, and they had to pick it up. After I sent them numerous pictures of dog piles and waste, they contacted me and said, quit sending them to me. All I'm asking is for property dog owners to be courteous of their neighbors, and take responsibility for their dogs. We desperately need a city ordinance to address the serious health issue. The city manager was out at our house today, and we showed my-- I wasn't home, but my husband showed him the area in question, and the dog piles and the flies are on it. It's a health hazard. So, that's my comment on that. The comment I have on your stops, the stop sign that hopefully will be approved for Southwest 24th and Southwest Coast, that you're going to be hearing testimony on today, I'm all in favor of it. I've been asking for over 10 years for two stop signs, one in front of our house, and one on Southwest Coast. People that are going north on Coast, they do not stop at the stop sign that's there. We've had police officers sit in our driveway, but they can't sit there 24 hours a day waiting for people. We've seen numerous miss accidents, and I'm just pleased that the council is taking that up, and I want to voice my approval for it. And I don't know if you would take pictures of dog waste in my, in the neighbor's backyard or not.
You're always welcome to submit them to the city recorder.
Okay. I thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, appreciate it. I went out of order here, but Dan Clanton?
That's...
Oh, that was Dan there, okay, I'm sorry, thank you. Kevin Kofel?
My name is Kevin Kofel, and I live at 670 Southwest 24th. For, I'd skip right to the stop sign. We had come here, going to come here originally, and we didn't know that the stop sign was on the agenda, so it is good news. I'd just like to read the comments I'd written several days ago about this. For more than several years now, we have observed the intersection at Southwest Coast and Southwest 24th, when a new road was put through for the Olivia Beach subdivision. Little thought seems to have been given concerning what is essentially a three-way intersection. While a stop sign has been present for northbound traffic on the new road, no traffic controls were installed for southbound traffic or eastbound traffic. The intersection is dangerous. Southbound traffic, while the road clearly turns to the west, simply will continue through without slowing down, and more often than not, will not stop for northbound traffic. Many instances of near collisions have been observed, some of them, and, you know, I've had to stop for people. Only by what I would call simple luck, there have been no accidents. And many individuals have clearly had trouble discerning who is supposed to yield or give right-of-way. The original existing road, Southwest Coast, should have been given a stop sign. It just seems that the new, maybe an oversight, or the new road was preferred, or, I'm not really sure how that worked. And while we believe the situation is being corrected, and apparently it is being corrected, and that's about, I just have some other comments about local speeders, and people that might need guidance for the, for traffic, traffic safety. And, yeah, so we're really happy about the stop sign thing. Yeah, especially an issue when, oftentimes when 101 backs up, the anchor and coast become a shortcut or a bypass, like if traffic is really heavy on 101, and it's, people don't know what to, what to do, really, when they get to the intersection. And I have comments about the animal waste. Animal waste, specifically dog waste, while there are ordinances requiring waste to be picked up in parks and city property, no such ordinances exist for the disposal of dog waste on private property. While a person might assume that a property owner would pick up animal waste generated on their property, it's not always the case. Specifically, we have a neighbor who has control of a dog, and permission of a VRD owner for the neighbor to use his dog, his yard as a toilet. Neither of these individuals seem to see multiple piles of dog waste, of what is hazardous waste as a problem. The dog owner lets his dog out, it leaves its waste, barks, he lets it in, and that's that. His idea of waste disposal is either covering the piles with weeds, or scattering it about, neither of which addresses the issue of smell or the spread of contaminants. To further explain, when the VRD owner arrives at his VRD, he proceeds to pick up the dog waste, along with the weed piles, in some misguided effort, being a good neighbor, with no considerations for our concerns about the waste being left for days and weeks at a time. To me, it's a surreal thing to observe. The dog owner is a sarcastic individual. He's thrown liquor bottles over the fence into our yard, and he's removed boundary markers. Now, those aren't things, really, that the city can address, you know, and he hasn't done anything enough to be charged with a crime, but they are frustrating issues. And, you know, it might be just an oversight. I think Newport has ordinances about animal waste needing to be picked up on private property. We've, my mom has done a lot of work on this, and it seems like maybe it's just an oversight. And it might be something that's worth considering. It could happen to anybody. I mean, you know, is that it?
If you got a final thought?
I was just going to complain about proliferation of VRD properties.
Maybe for another night.
You've probably heard it before. Can I just leave these comments?
Absolutely, with the city recorder.
Alright.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming forward. Anyone who did not sign up wish to speak at this time? Seeing none. Presentations, were we going to, I'm sorry, the interview after this or before it?
After.
After, thank you very much. Salmon Drift Creek Watershed Council presentation.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'm David Hawker, I'm a board member of the Salmon Drift Creek Watershed Council, and beside me is Paul Caten, the president of the Watershed Council and the driving force behind it. And he's going to handle most of this, but I'm going to just begin it briefly. Again, thanks for having us, and we'll try to make this as brief as possible. The Salmon Drift Creek Watershed Council is a 501(c)(3), we're federally tax-exempt, a nonprofit. We occupy Suite A, which is downstairs from City Hall, in what's become a nonprofit enclave down there, next to Career Tech, the Backpack Program, United Way. The watershed councils are enabled by state statute, I believe it's ORS 541.910, and were recognized by local government. Excuse me, I'm going to lose my voice early. This is our mission, it's what we do, is we protect and restore the ecological health of local watersheds, produce clean water, as well as the protection or restoration of healthy fish and wildlife resources, promote overall watershed health, water quality, water quantity, and protect drinking water sources, which obviously is of interest to the city, as the city has an interest in two watersheds, Schooner Creek and Drift Creek, both of which we do work in. This is Paul?
Yeah, this is the area that the Salmon Drift Creek Watershed Council covers. We go from, from the Salmon River to the north, down to Seletz Bay, which encompasses not only the Salmon River, but Devil's Lake, we do some work there. Schooner Creek is here, and Drift Creek here, as David just said.
So what we do, and what, I'm a fairly recent member on, on the board, and what struck me about this particular nonprofit group, is we don't sit there and make policy and promote things, what we do is get out there and do it. I have never seen a nonprofit as energetic and on the ground, doing actual improvement projects, as this particular group does. So how we do it, we assess the condition of the watershed, scope projects to protect and improve the watershed, and then go after money to do projects. And that's how we, how we survive and how we do projects. We're self-supported on grants. Some of the impact that we've had, we've had 250 projects from 2005 through 2018. We spent $3.3 million in funded projects through, mostly through contractors. $3.3 million in money spent on the watersheds directly. Funding sources, you can see that where the bulk of the money is coming from is the county and, and local government, state and federal. We do get foundation money, and, and have gotten some money from, from the city.
This is a typo, it's actually 1.8 million from the state.
Yeah. We tried to fix that, didn't we, Paul?
I couldn't.
Okay. We're not experts at, at our point. Contracted services, 1.6 million. Personnel, 900,000. Equipment and materials, 325,000. Travel isn't a big part of our budget. Rent, 51,000. We might, we might stop there for just a second and talk about rent. Just think about it. We're, we're a nonprofit, we do a lot of work in Schooner Creek, and also Drift Creek, and the area, and we think we benefit the city, and might ask you at some point to consider letting us have the same deal that some of the other nonprofits have downstairs. That's not why we came tonight, we're trying to educate the community a little bit on, on what we do. Major project, or do you want to, where do you want to...
Sure, I'll pick this up. We've, we've been involved in a number of projects, I think the highest profile work we've been doing is in the Salmon River, but we've also done work on restoration projects on Devil's Lake, Schooner Creek, which we'll spend some time talking about. We've also, the fun, the real basic part of our program is water quality monitoring, which we've been doing for about more than 10 years. And we also have had an education program. We call it REEF, but as you can see there, Restore Ecosystems and Educate Future Conservation Leaders, adding CF, CL to that, didn't make as much sense as REEF, so people liked the acronym, REEF, so we stuck with that. The major high-profile project, we, we started off, and many people probably saw a lot of the work we were doing. Here's a 1975 aerial photograph, the Salmon River estuary, this cascade head here, the mouth of the river. This is Highway 101 and Highway 18. This is the, at this point, it was basically, just about defunct, was Pixie Land in here, and this was an RV park that was located here. Across the river, along Fraser, along Fraser Road, which goes here, was an, was a trailer park called Tamara Keys. Here's a, zooming in on that, is this trailer park went non-compliant as far as the septic system and the DEQ closed it down. The Forest Service subsequently acquired the land, and in order to build this, they had to build dikes around here to keep the water out, they had to put a lot of fill-in here to bring it up above the areas that would flood. In 2009, we did a major restoration project here, and this is, we did that in 2009, this is a few years after the vegetation has come in, the dikes have been removed, and now this is a naturally functioning estuary. If you ever go out there on Fraser Road and look at it at high tide, this whole area just completely floods, and it's well-used by, by salmonids. This is what Main Street Pixie Land looked like in 1970. The Pixie Land went, only survived about five years, and so did, towards 1975, it went bankrupt. Forest Service acquired the land over a period of time, and then in 2010 and 11, we went in there and did restoration, and this is basically the same view of, as we're standing here, is what the, what Pixie Land looked like after we did the restoration. These projects, both in Tamara Keys and Pixie Land, involved a huge amount of land, earth moving. There were thousands and thousands of truckloads of dirt that were brought in here to fill in, to build dikes around it, to keep it from flooding, those all had to be removed. So it was a major project, and I think, I don't have the exact number, but we probably hired local contractors and equipment and what have you, spending about three-quarters of a million dollars to restore both Tamara Keys and Pixie Land. Both very major projects. Now, what we would like to really talk, to spend some of the time now, talking about our projects on Schooner Creek. Over the years, well, these aren't nearly as high-profile, and you probably don't see them as much as you would have seen the projects we did on Pixie Land on, from Highway 101, but we did a lot of work replacing culverts, to improve fish passage, repaired the north and south fork ladders, which were historically used as a water intake system for Lincoln City, and we did large wood placements. Currently, we have a project ongoing, which we're cooperating with the city to protect your drinking water stores, to keep sediment out of Schooner Creek, and we'll talk about that a little more in a minute. This is one of the project, one of the culvert replacement projects we did, the watershed council got the money, and we bought all of the hardware, all of the gravel and what have you, when in here. This is actually cooperative project with, with a county. This is a county crew, this is county equipment, they came in, opened the road up in one day, put the culvert in and backfilled it, so the road was only closed for part of a day. We've done other projects on Schooner Creek, but I won't go into all of those culvert replacements that we did. Another thing that we do is, we put wood into streams. This is a picture of an ex, a local contractor, we buy logs locally, we have a hire a contractor to come in with a backhoe and place wood in here, and these, these pieces of wood were placed in. Here's a next photograph, and you can see the backhoe here. This is the same, two views of the same location, but just after more wood has been put in there. And part of the reason we do this, is that, what it does is it captures spawning gravel. The water slows down when it hits these barriers, and then, so that salmon can spawn there. It also creates for the salmonids, or for the juveniles that hatch out, they can live under these, and they're protected from predators, and as well as it, it improves water quality in Schooner Creek. When the water hits this, instead of just rushing down the stream, it spreads out into these vegetated areas and gets filtered, so we help remove, it helps remove sediment from the stream as well. This is another project, if we happen to need to do a project where we have to put larger logs, and those logs are limited pretty much on the last slide to 40, to 40-foot logs, but if you're working in a wide part of the stream, we typically will put in 100-foot logs, which are too big to haul into the site by truck. And so we hire some, and this happens to be a Chinook, Twin Road, or helicopter, you can't really see it, but there is a 100-foot log hanging down from this. And what they do is then, it's amazing to watch that, that crew position these logs from that helicopter into the stream. It's pretty exciting to watch, but again, this does the same thing as what putting it in by, with a backhoe, except these are much longer logs, because you can see that the stream flood channel here, or the flood plain, is much wider, and if you use short logs, they'll get washed out of there. So you lock them in behind the trees. It does the same thing, as I said, it creates rearing habitat, it grabs gravel for fish to spawn in. The juveniles can live under these, in these protected areas, and again, it, when the water gets real high, it spreads the water out into the vegetated areas and helps protect, filter the watershed. Another thing that we do, had recently, we did, there's an unused logging road on the south fork of Schooner Creek. We decommissioned that road, because it was no longer being used, and removed the culverts, which you see here is basically, this is one side of the road, and this is the other side over here. What we did is we excavated, removed the culvert. The reason we do that, and this, we probably removed about 40 culverts on this road, is if those culverts get blocked up, they will just blow out and take all that sediment down into the creek, and creates a real sediment problem and turbidity, you know, for the water treatment plant.
And I, I'll add that the city has had historic, serious problems with landslides, and a lot of those are initiated on some of these roads. So where a road is no longer needed and can be decommissioned, it, it will eventually result in a lot less danger from these major landslides. in a lot less danger from these major landslides.
This is a major project that we're just getting started on. We're cooperating with the city of Link, working with the city of Lincoln City, Lincoln County and the Forest Service. The Watershed Council has a grant from the Forest Service, and the city has a grant from the drinking water program. And those are combined to basically assess road conditions on Schooner Creek. And then prioritize road segments that need to be rehabilitated. We target sections that are most unstable and prone to failure. And part of the reason we do this is trying to focus our investments. We don't have unlimited funds, or nobody has unlimited funds, so we can't repair everything on the road. So what we want to do is identify those projects that will best improve water quality and reduce sediment in the stream. They'll still be part of a plan that eventually will get fixed, all of them, but we want to focus on the ones that will have the biggest bang for their buck up front. And what we're talking about is, there's a couple of simple examples. We're banking slide, and this is kind of small ones, but if they're big enough, they slide across the road and get into Schooner Creek, and they become sediments for Schooner Creek, as David just said. That's another example. Here we have an example of a culvert under the road. This is, the road here has become clogged from all the sediment coming down. And so we're going to find those culverts that we need to, you know, upgrade, enlarge, and replace them, so that we don't wind up with this kind of sediment. And have, design them so that they'll drop their sediment before it gets into the creek. Let me just talk a little bit about our water quality program. It's been ongoing for more than 10 years. We did bi-weekly water quality sampling, almost all volunteers. We use handheld instruments to measure the water quality. We also take grab samples and take those back to the land, to the lab for analysis. We created a comprehensive database, and we've been doing this, as I said, for more than 10 years. We also measure stream flow. This is in Schooner Creek, just above the Lincoln City Treatment Plant, trying to identify just how low that stream gets in the summer, which is kind of critical, because at some point, the city has to stop withdrawing water. And that's why, part of the reason they went for that extra, for that Drift Creek right. Another really, and this, I'll just wrap up here, talking about our education program. Again, Restore Ecosystems, Educate Future Education Leaders. This is a group from Taft High over at the Lincoln City Treatment Plant. And here we have one of the operators showing how the filters work in the plant. Students go out, the lab, the Schooner Creek became, becomes a real outdoor laboratory, and needless to say, I think from the smile on that kid's face, that he's really enjoying what he's doing. He's in a wetsuit. But here we are, looking at the log jams, making measurement, the students make measurements, do photo points, analysis, and they learn about how this wood in the stream creates habitat. And actually, we have a student here in a safe location, actually looking at, doing a snorkel, what they call snorkel survey, to count juvenile salmon in Schooner Creek. Other projects we've done with students, we've taken them out in OSU Research Vessels to study marine samples. This is out in Yerquinna Bay. We've also taken the students out in, on a whale-watching trip. And if you look at this really carefully, you see this life jacket, but over the life jacket, there's some black items sticking up here? Well, that happened to be a fin off of a killer whale. So the kids had a pretty exciting and memorable trip. And I just want to wrap up by saying one last thing, is that we didn't only work with the high school students. We worked with Ocean Lake students, elementary school. Took the children out to tide pools, and then they went back to the school and made posters of what they learned. So it was a really successful program, and, you know, I think, as I said, Schooner Creek has become an important learning tool for the kids in the community, and they still use it on a regular basis. Any questions?
I don't have a question. I just have a thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. Very interesting.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you. Thanks for all you do. Right. Public interview for Planning Commission. Not sure if I have a script for this or not, or? I know that, but I guess we'll just have the applicants come forward if we could. I've lost my... Yeah, but the whole agenda thing disappeared for me here. Open her again.
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, I've got, thank you so much.
Well, that was kind.
That part I have.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
We had two applicants, and I don't see our second applicant. This is Marie. We've met her before.
Well, we have two openings, right?
No.
No? Just the one? Well?
Is Kathy where, here? Kathy?
Kathy?
I don't see her.
Was Kathy notified? I believe so. Okay. In that case, do we, I'd like some guidance. Proceed, do the interview?
The code does require a public interview, I believe, however.
Right, but it doesn't require we have to do it tonight. So my question is, do one now, do one later, or we just say, well, you didn't show up, this is it?
I think it's your discretion.
Yeah, council's pleasure?
Say, we called and notified, assuming that the other candidate had been notified. So if not, then take it back.
And Ron, you say she was?
As far as I know, yes.
Okay.
I would just say that I believe she was, because there's some note saying that she would be back after a trip at late May, so this would be.
It's on the 23rd or something like that, so. Okay, council.
She had an opening for quite a while, didn't she?
Mm-hmm.
Quite a while.
Is council prepared to move forward tonight?
Yes.
Okay. Then that's what we're going to do. It's going to be easy-peasy. I don't have a real, we just basically have some questions to ask, and I don't really care particular order. We can just start down here, Mr. Hogan, if you want to start with number one. You've seen the questions.
Yes.
And thank you. If you'd introduce yourself for the public.
My name is Marie McFarland, and I live at 2062 Northwest 50th, just on the edge of Rhodes End.
If you'd like, tell us just a little bit about yourself again, just for the public's consumption.
I have, I have a varied background. I started, I grew up in Salem, and I went to Willamette University, graduated from there with two degrees in music, and went back to Washington DC, where I taught. Did all kinds of performing at the, opening of the Kennedy Center, Wolf Trap, all kinds of things. And then had a baby and went out of teaching, because they closed all these schools. So I went into IT, spent 35 years in IT, from the bottom, designing systems all the way to the top. And have a very wide resume with IT, with many, many, many types of systems and many, many businesses worldwide. Done a lot of traveling, owned an ice cream parlor, and I have had my...
Yeah, I saw that, and I didn't see, it wasn't listed, except that you had one.
I did. I had one in Salem. It was called Olga's. It was out in Liberty, off of Southeast Liberty.
And how long did you run that?
Had that for two years, and we closed it.
Okay, thank you.
I learned, if you ever want to open one, let me know. I'll explain how you can lose your shirt.
Well, I ask because for me, it's important that we have someone who knows business on these things.
Yes, I have a business degree also, from Maryland. So I had the business, and I also had an insurance agency back in Washington DC area. Had one, we were a broker for several years. And then I also had my own consulting business, where I was going in and basically working with businesses to move them into the 20, excuse me, 21st century, and also figuring out how they could get out of the issues and the problems they were in. So it was very strong, working contracts, working business, how they did their business, how they needed to change it to move forward.
Right, okay.
So I have a very strong business background, with a lot of different companies and a lot of different types of manufacturing, and insurance, and treasury, all kinds of systems. So I've dealt with that.
All right. Well, then, we're going to go ahead and just start with the questions, and Counselor Hogan will start with the first one.
Thank you for applying.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Why would you like to be on the Planning Commission?
I do have a strong interest in the development of Lincoln City. I've had family around this area since 1977, and as a child, I used to come over here all the time. So I've permanently, pretty much been here since 2010. I believe that one must be involved in the community to help to understand it and be part of its growth. Living in Rhodes End has given me the opportunity to see how land usage affects my neighborhood and the people that live around us. I would like to be a part of this commission to help mold the city in a positive manner and work towards that.
Thank you.
And I have question number two. What are the top three planning issues facing Lincoln City?
That was a difficult question. And I said, there are several issues facing us, and it's hard to focus on just three issues. However, I've identified three areas that I believe are priorities within Lincoln City. And they include, one is the infrastructure of the city, which includes roads, parking, public transportation, general usage of the land, which supports these efforts. And I believe that gets into zoning. That gets into so many things with the land usage, but the infrastructure, I kind of lump that into one. The second is standardization of regulation. I've learned through experience that the city is not only diverse in many areas, but specifically in the regulations that govern it. Nowhere is that more evident to me than the recent annexation of Rhodes End, and I know that's been a couple of years, but that annexation. We are under many different rules and regulations than the rest of the city. I believe that we need to get rid of the old outdated regulations and rules on the books by which decisions are made and should be reviewed and modernized. We need to get rid of obsolete regulations and look at adding regulations that support current development of the city where new regulations are needed. And we need to remove the confusion that it presents by standardizing our regulations to be one government, not five small communities that have come together in name only. And sometimes I see this being a problem that we can address differently. Thirdly, I believe affordable housing has a very high priority. However, the cost of building versus the safety regulations that are meeting in the middle with contractors, city officials, and regulations are not always on the same page. This is a roadblock to making progress on one of our most pressing concerns.
Thanks. What should the role of the public be in planning decisions?
There's an old adage that I found works in many arenas. I can't give you the formula for success, but the formula for failure is trying to please all the people all the time. And I think you all know that from personal experience, too. I feel that often, government tries to do just that. You've already implemented a major strategy for public involvement, which are the hearings and also the meetings you go through and all the processes that you already have in place. There is always more synergy to solutions when involving open discussion. In addition, you have the processes in place for reviews and dissent, which all parties, when they don't all agree. Communication is the most important form of getting information out to the public as one can use. So I'm a very, very strong believer in that communication, excuse me, communication.
Great, thank you. Counselor Walkie.
Okay. Marie, how should the Planning Commission balance individual owners' interests with community interests?
Thank you, Congressman. Excuse me, Councilman. There should always be a balance between both parties, with a focus on what is best for the community as a whole. Again, you're not always going to please everyone, and there's these forums which should be in place to make the hard decisions when it comes to balancing the community's interests. Planning is a community, and is a community event with community input, and it tends to be the best solution to getting people on board. A plan should be available, and people should be encouraged to participate through suggestions and ideas submitted to the community and to the committees for evaluation. Business cases for any suggestions, also a good tool to use to evaluate the impact of the community.
The next question is, what should be the role of the Planning Commission in creating a look or image for the city?
Thank you. I believe that the look and feel of a community is the responsibility of all the citizens of that community. To that end, there are many organizations within the community that should come together for this purpose. The Planning Commission, to me, should be the voice of determining whether the idea fits with the regulations provided for land usage and for development. That should be the commission's focus, not determining the look and image. That is accomplished by integrating the rules and regulations with the proposals that have been recommended to the committee for approval or for disapproval. I also believe that there are other groups within the city that put forth that vision of the community, and that the role of the Planning Commission is to look at the regulations, the ordinances, and standards that govern the development to make sure the vision and the order of law meet to better serve the community as a whole.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Marie.
Good evening.
Earlier, you talked about affordable housing. Can you talk about how a city Planning Commission councils balance the affordability with regulations?
Oh, yes. Thank you, sir. This is a very difficult problem, as cost of building and land both rise. And especially here, when funds aren't necessarily available to less fortunate individuals, as far as what the incomes are and the jobs available, to go towards that. So things don't always mesh up. I believe that the city has a role in helping get affordable housing, and it's possibly through federal grants, state grants, and it should be actively pursuing these avenues. However, I don't believe it's totally up to the city to fully fund the effort. The city should be a partner in these endeavors, and in addition, there are measures that the city could offer towards offsetting the costs associated with affordable housing, which could be incentives such as tax cuts to builders, risk and reward type contracts, incentives for on-time work that is done, projects, potential tax breaks for land that is currently owned by individuals who could potentially offer their land to the city for purposes of building affordable housing. I believe that if these ideas were brainstormed, there would be many more ideas along with these, this line of work that could help develop these issues. Thank you.
Why, yes, I do. Sorry. Miss Agent has my copy. I'm just kidding. It's hers. What is the role of the Planning Commission when a person has a really good idea, but the city's regulations prohibit it? Or a really bad idea, and the city allows it?
Oh, yes. I believe that there are many regulations on the books in cities, counties, and states, and even the federal level, that are either outdated or no longer apply, which should be reviewed and the process followed by which those regulations be removed. Just as there are bad regulations, I believe there are good regulations that need to be added to the book to address modernization of the regulations which are needed to. If the really good idea benefits the city, then there should be a process to modify the processes and the regulations as mentioned above. This would allow the city to move forward with progressive changes that reflect the current modernization to continue. And just as regulations should be changed, if there's a really bad idea, but the regulations support it, a business case should be put forth, and the idea should be brought up to the group with a final say, and I believe that's the council. Then the regulations should be reviewed to see how they could be modified as to not allow bad decisions.
Great. I have one follow-up question that I didn't see touched on here, is you've been made aware of the time requirements, you know, when they meet and the time commitment?
I am aware of the, I have looked on the website. I have not been told specifically when they meet, but I have no problems with time requirements. I've retired four times, and I'm bored.
You should have just led with that, and just said, okay, you're on.
I'm looking for an opportunity to be a part of something and work toward it. And considering, as a CIO Michaux Stavionics, my average day was 20 hours, I usually don't have a problem with time.
So first and third Tuesdays, 6 o'clock till 8, 8:30, 9, yeah, generally.
I'm sorry, the time?
Usually, it starts at 6, and then our, whatever your agenda dicta. Usually it starts at six, and then our, whatever your agenda dictates. So just so you're aware of that, and the time commitment's necessary, and how to contact people if you can't make it, because your attendance is really important to these things, especially, I mean, I'm just, I'm telling you what you already know, but just for public consumption, so that, you know, you can have a quorum, and everyone doesn't waste their time showing up, and we don't have that fourth, and so, appreciate that. Thank you. All right. Yes?
I think planning commissioners need to be aware of all the prep time that's necessary, too. It takes a lot of time to get ready for one of those agendas. As CIO, I had steering committees, and I had to deal with all the contracts that went for the company globally, so I had a lot of prep work. So I'm accustomed to dealing with prep work.
Right, and you'll get your packets on Friday for Tuesday, so you've got the weekend to consume thousands of pages and have a test when you show up. No? Okay. That was just when I was on it. That brought me to the question. Oh, and then, of course, you know, you'll, you'll get the usual from our city attorney about, you know, you're going to be part of a public process, and the public meeting laws apply, and all those things and ethics are important to, to get knowledgeable about, and there's many resources. So should you get appointed tonight, make use of those. Anyone else?
May I?
Please.
I just want to thank you again for coming before us and answering some, sometimes a bit difficult questions. I appreciate that you have, that you applied for the Budget Committee and that you came back for the Planning Commission. I appreciate that. Thank you.
I'm a glutton for punishment.
Great. All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Looking for a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to appoint Marie McFarland to the Planning Commission for a position of retired with the term expiring December 31st of 2021.
Second.
Motion to second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We have to do a voice on this, don't we? Or do we have to do a ballot, or?
Ballot.
No, you just have a, you have to approve by motion. You don't need to do a ballot because you don't have more than one applicant. That's just merely a way to narrow.
Okay, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you. Welcome to the Planning Commission. All right. What did you do? More paper, more paper, more paper. Public hearing, public comments. So we are going to jump right to five? Is that correct?
Let me see.
Public hearing on Resolution 2018-09. Someone keep me?
I'm looking, I'm looking, I'm looking. H?
Okay. A resolution of the City of Lincoln City granting exemption from competitive bidding for construction of a new police facility by means of a construction manager, General Contractor, GMGC, and authorizing alternative contracting method. And I don't know who's taking the lead on this.
I have that, Mr. Mayor, and Mr. Appicello will help me on this. You're very familiar with this project. This is associated with the police building. We are proposing that we construct this building according to the construction manager, general contractor format, in which we are bringing three professionals or professional organizations on board to assist us. The architect, which you know, the owner's representative, and Mr. Dwyer is here representing them today, and then a third, which is the general contractor. Normally, under a bid process, the architect would prepare the documents for bid. We'd send it out for, for a, for people to bid on, and then you would get it, and you make a selection. In this case, you bring the contractor on board at the beginning, and they work with the owner's rep, and they work with the architect based upon a budget that will be ultimately approved by the city council. As you know, currently, we're working on a budget of $10.5 million. So we know the price, and that creates some opportunities in the planning process. Under the findings, there were a few things, under, let me jump back, under Oregon law, you have that option to, to go with the CMGC process rather than the bidding process for just a straight bid, as long as you've included some findings and threw resolutions. And I wanted to highlight a few of the findings that are significant. Unpacket page 23. One of the highlight, findings, which I think is one of the most important highlights, is that the CMGC provides opportunities for cost savings. Because they are, during the beginning of the process, they will be consulted on the construction of the building and can add that value engineering, that value discussion that would help us to raise the price. The other part that you'll find on the next page is the guaranteed maximum price, that once that price has been established, then you know how much the building is going, is going to be, and all three parties will be working towards that budget that you have I mentioned the value engineering, the benefits that during the pre-construction phase, the CMGC will be evaluating the budget, making suggestions for cost saving changes and value enhancements. They'll evaluate major systems and make design recommendations to the project team about which the systems are most cost-effective. I want to point out one typo in your findings. I'm not sure how this got in there, because we haven't built a library under this system, but it says specialized experiences as the feature and components of the library, I should say, the police building.
The project?
Or the project, yes. They, going a little bit farther, the selection is based upon the qualifications. Price is a factor, but ultimately, price is negotiated. It's, it is, well, it, the statement says it's less important. That was written by somebody who's not a money guy. The, the, the price is always important because it factors into the guaranteed maximum price. So I don't want to, anybody to think that price, fees are not important. However, it's not, it's not the most important thing in the selection process. In the selection process, you're looking for the expertise of the, of the companies, and then, once that is, recommendation is made for you, then we will be requesting a little bit later on tonight that you allow us to go into negotiations. It will officially establish the price for the, for the CMGC. Also, the, this process provides technical, it, it helps when you have very large technical complex buildings, of which we do have in the case of a police building, and that it not only houses the police, it also will house our dispatching facilities, it will also act as the emergency operations center. So there's several factors that lend itself to that technical complexity and the expertise that comes with it. So those are just the highlights that I wanted to mention of the findings. The rest are in there. I hope you've had a chance to read them, and I don't know if Mr. Appicello has any additional information, but.
Your Honor, counsel, just another typo. It's not the contradicting agency, it's the contracting agency, and thank you, Counselor Walkie, for finding that. And so we'll just ask for permission to correct a few of the typographical errors in here. The, this is a public hearing, so, Your Honor, I'd ask that you open the public hearing, and after, if you have any questions of me, go ahead and ask, but you then would ask for any comments. This was advertised originally for the meeting, which was supposed to be a week ago, but we asked at that meeting that it be continued to this evening.
All right. Any questions from Mr. Appicello or Mr. Chandler? Okay, so the public hearing is now open on this matter. Anyone care to speak on it? Seeing none, get a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved?
Second.
Motion to second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you very much. Now, we can, we've decided we can roll straight into these.
If you would like to proceed and make a motion on the resolution, you can do that now.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move to approve Resolution 2018-09.
Second.
Motion to second, discussion.
Just want to make sure those typographical errors are.
With typo errors noted and changed, right. I guess I have one question within this, is I'm, I'm on board with this, but I'm going to hear from people, and I guess I would like an explanation or something that says, why wouldn't I want to do this?
Why would you not want to do it?
Yeah. Why would I not want to do this?
The most common thing I hear from people is that it's just not the traditional way that government procures items. Normally, we prepare a document, we say, go out and bid it, and that's the way that you inject the competitiveness of the price. And so you may get it at what your budget is, you may come in lower, and may come in higher. At a time when it's, when the, when the market is good and you get a lot of competition, that works out well. Right now, we do know from the, from our discussions with our owner's rep and with the, the architect, that markets are tight for contractors, and we're seeing price increases. So in a time when it's not, when, that we're in now, and you can establish a budget right off the beginning with, that's an advantage, but I would think that the one thing that you would hear is that it's not typically the way government does things, and normally, you're going to interject a, the best the cities can do in creating a market when you just simply bid it.
If I may. We're limit, this, this type of, I don't know, contract, we're putting a limit on it? We're saying it has to be underneath this amount?
Your budget is $10.5 million.
Either way, right?
Either way.
Right.
Yeah.
And it's, and what's to prevent somebody from this particular type of, you know, contracting method versus the other, to prevent a company from submitting either way?
Well, in the end, what you're going, the agreement that you will have, and it comes well down the road after much of the design work is done, is an actual price that the CMGC guarantees. And now, we're still working on that, and like I said, you've set a budget. We'll be coming back with some information to you on where we, where, where we are, what it takes to meet that budget. But part of the advantage of this is a guaranteed maximum price, and you don't pay it if they, if they exceed it.
Isn't that what the 10% contingency is in other contracting methods?
Normally, the 10% contingency is going to be for something that comes up that was unexpected, or something that an owner wants to add into it. So, for example, if we decide that something was cut out, it looks like we're coming at a, at a good price, and we want to add something back into it, that's usually where the contingency comes in, or if there is some type of unexpected expense, that's where the contingency would be.
And this other method, there's not that?
No, you still have a contingency in the other method.
And I'm, I'm not a big fan of not doing bids, but given the fact that this has now been advertised for, what, three, four weeks, I haven't heard from one person objecting to this, and normally, I would hear from people who are pretty upset about these kind of things, and so I really have no reason to vote no on these, on this. And I feel comfortable with the information we'd be given and the oversight we will have in the future, so I'm okay voting on this. Any other discussion?
Yeah, yeah. Just, just for, for record, in the, the major contracting bids that we've had, could you provide us with a list of the traditional method versus this method that we're voting on? Could you provide that? Because I have heard that it seems like we, as a city, are going towards this method without having the open bids, and so, just as a way to say, sure, it seems like that, but in the last year, we've had this many versus that many.
If I understand what you're asking, yes, I can provide that, but it will be a little bit down the road.
Sure, I mean, yeah.
And, and the reason is, is that the price becomes, the price with all of the breakout of the different elements that go into a building, the HVAC system, the electric, and all of that, that gets determined at a later time?
I'm not, I'm not talking about the dollar amounts. I'm just saying specifically the type of bidding method that we've used in our major contracts over the last couple of years.
Breakdown?
Have we used?
Oh, a breakdown of, yes, I, yes, I can provide that.
Right, right. Just as a way to say, hey, this is, this is the projects that we've had competitive bidding, and this is the non-competitive bidding, so that people understand, you know?
Got it. Sorry, I didn't understand that.
That's all right. I don't speak as clearly as I can.
I, I thought I read we'd never used this method before.
No, we have, we have on the boring projects.
Right.
Oh, that's right, yeah, okay.
Because we already have them in place and all that. Okay, anyone else? All right. Looking for a motion? Oh, no, we were in discussion, I'm sorry. I need a roll call, then. Thank you.
All right. Anderson?
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Walkie?
Yes.
And Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much. All right, let me see, that's going down there. We just did five and six.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
We've skipped over the street sign.
We're going to move that down to J.
It's just a resolution.
It's just a resolution.
Oh.
So we closed public hearing, da-da-da-da-da. Okay. So I'm sorry, we're on seven, Kate, is that right? This has to be a hearing?
Revenues, yes.
Okay. So Resolution Number 2018-11, a resolution declaring the city's election to receive state revenues. So open the public hearing on this matter. Ask for any public comment. Seeing none, motion to close.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you. Motion?
I'll move to approve Resolution Number 2018-11.
Second.
Did you get, choose, pick one? All right. Motion to second, discussion. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Hinton?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Walkie?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yes.
And Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. And then we need another public hearing for this next one. Resolution 2018-10, a resolution setting forth water sewer rates. Open the public hearing on this matter. Anyone who wants to speak on it, please come forward. Seeing no one, motion?
Move to approve, move to close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion to second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Motion, please.
Move to approve Resolution Number 2018-10.
Second.
Motion to second, discussion.
Yes.
Please.
With, I remember, Counselor Anderson, we were, you were asking about the reduction for summertime, something, what was it, summertime sewer reduction, peak, peak month sewer reduction? Did you get any?
No, that'll, I'll bring that up as a different item later.
Okay. Anyone else? Figure it out. Roll call, please.
Okay. Anderson?
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Walkie?
Yes.
And Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, then, Resolution 2018-12, adopting the budget. We have another hearing, correct? So open the public hearing concerning that matter. Crickets are chirping. So move to, our motion to close hearing. I guess I'd say, no one has come forward. Motion to close the hearing.
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion to second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Motion?
Motion to approve Resolution 2018-12 and adopt the fiscal year 2018/19 budget.
Second.
Motion to second, discussion.
Ta-da.
Hinton?
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Where you got it?
Oh.
All right, well, you go ahead and then.
Should she?
All right, then you come forward. Thank you.
She's going to help me.
Okay.
In the staff memo that was in the council packet, there is a change that staff is requesting, the final item that was approved by the Budget Committee for funding sidewalk construction. Two of the sources to fund that were from funds that we can't use for that purpose, and so, we either need to change the amount that's budgeted for that sidewalk construction or change where those monies are coming from.
Hey, does that need a separate motion on those, or, I want the money?
The council has to change it, we can't, so.
If I may.
Please.
Debbie was helping me with this. I was making sure that our funding for the sidewalks was pretty solid, and then she told me this, that we needed to make a change. And so, she gave me a couple of potential motions here, and one that, one that I like, and this is to extend the sidewalks to this extent, we can. The proposed budget, as she just said, there's a couple of funds that we can't use, so we need to correct that. And the total funds that the Budget Committee approved was $1,907,000. And so, the part of it that doesn't quite work is $350,000, so the correction for that could be this. In the facilities capital fund, reduce transfers out by 200,000, and increase capital reserves by 200,000. And then, in the North Highway 101 Improvement Fund, reduce transfers out by 150,000, and increase capital reserves by 150,000. Then, to answer your question, Mr. Mayor, we solidly have, would have that same amount that was approved by the Budget Committee, but it would be appropriated out of the correct funds.
Okay, the problem I'm running into here, and Mr. Appicello, help me, we're in a discussion phase.
Yeah, we need to withdraw the motion to approve the budget, withdraw the motion to approve the budget, and then go back and make a motion, because the motion to approve the budget, at least the one in the council communication, said as amended, and you hadn't done the amendment yet.
Correct.
So, we need to step back and address this in a motion, and then make the motion to approve the budget.
I'll withdraw my motion.
Give me a second.
Okay, so now?
Do you want me to repeat it, or?
If you're gonna make a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion to that effect.
Those first, to correct the issues of not taking money out of the facilities capital fund or the Northway High Improvement Fund, so that leaves 350,000. If you want to keep the 1,907,000 that's budgeted for sidewalks, then two options would be to either pull that from the general fund contingency, in which case you would increase the general fund transfers out by 350,000 and reduce contingency by 300,000, 350,000.
This is on page 36 of the electronic packet.
Or you could reduce other street capital projects.
Okay, and my suggestion was from the capital projects rather than the general fund, and the total amount of 1,907,000 is the amount that we heard from the Public Works Director, that that's the amount of work that they can get done this year. And so, everything is as we discussed it before, but the correct funds would be used.
Okay, so you want, you want to keep the street capital budget as is, so we would need to move that, come up with the other 350,000 from the general fund?
Okay.
So, it's the corrections as were read, and then the funding source, you had two options, general fund and street capital fund, and you're saying the motion is use the general fund? Is that correct?
No.
Then you would have to reduce the street capital.
Okay.
And it would, either the, the two large items, and there are sidewalk construction or a street overlay.
Okay, so we don't wanna do that.
Okay, nice consents, concise motion. What wording do we need to get this done?
So, it depends on if you want to reduce, to fund this by cutting another project in the street capital fund, or if you want to fund this from the general fund contingencies. The motion's different, depending on which choice you would like.
So, having any of those projects in front of me, I don't know which one I'd wanna cut.
It's, if you didn't reduce sidewalk construction, then it would be reducing a street overlay project.
So, that's why you suggested the general fund?
Yes.
That it wouldn't take away from other projects that we heard about and?
Well, it would come from the contingency, so it wouldn't affect any currently budgeted projects.
Okay.
What about that reserve fund? Why can't we go to that?
Components of the reserve, you have the unappropriated fund balance, which is this about approximately $6 million, and then you have the contingency, which is money you can access during the year of 1.9 million. This would reduce this to 1,500.
The contingency was increased by the Budget Committee, so it's more like 2, 2 million something.
You're right.
Go to the contingency.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. If you would, if you would state my motion for me, please?
Okay. So, in the facilities capital fund, we would reduce transfer out by 200,000 and increase capital reserve by 200,000. In the Northwest Highway 101 Improvement Fund, we would reduce transfers out by 150,000, increase capital reserves by 150,000. And in the general fund, we would increase transfers out by 350,000 and reduce the general fund contingency by 350,000. All that for one change.
I so moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion to second, discussion. Hearing none, roll call?
Hoagland?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Walkie?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
And Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Any other changes?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Sorry.
Oh, she's got another one, sorry.
She wanted you.
I couldn't hear you.
I have a few, would you like to go ahead of me?
No, go ahead.
Okay.
All right. The second one that, that was important, and you were gonna bring back to the City Council from the Budget Committee, was the 25% match on the PERS from the state, and we didn't have a number at the time of our maximum that we could go, so.
So, the Senate bill says the maximum matching amount that may be reserved is the greater of 300,000 or 5% of our unfunded liability, which is like 580,000. I'm, I'm a tad unclear if that means 580,000 would be the match, so that we would contribute three times that amount, 2 point some million, to get the 580, or if the 580 is what we would contribute, and then they would do 25% of that. And I did do some looking around on the internet today to try to find the answer to that, and I didn't find anything. I, I believe it's saying that we could contribute up to 2.1 million and get a 580,000 match. But I'm not entirely.
Ew, I think we almost need to know the answer to that question, so.
Well, and that's, that's part of the difficulty, is I don't, there's, there's still some stuff outstanding that we don't really have answers to yet, so it's difficult to, is there somebody?
Who needs to be called to get that information, rather than?
We do have some time on this, because the, the state program runs for another year.
We have until, we, to, to make the application that we want to utilize this program, we have until next year, December 31, 2019, so we could even do it in the following budget year. And then, we don't actually have to make a lump sum payment until 2023.
So, we have time.
So, it's, yeah, we have time, and we don't even have to budget for it until 2023.
Well, my concern with that is, yeah, that's what they say now.
If we make the applica, I mean, we can make.
They run out of money, and they say, oh, we have to withdraw this program.
Yeah, and it, they have their, I did see on the internet that there's indications that it's a first come, first served, and so, if we wanted to look at this, I would definitely want to put in the application as soon as it opens up. But that application reserves the money for us, and then we don't have to pay it for a few years.
Mr. Mayor? Yeah, please. I mean, either way, I mean, I mean, are we looking to spend more than the 585,000? Are we really trying to spend 2.1 million? Or are we set as 5, 585,000 a good amount for now? So, either way, I think, I mean, unless we, as council, do wanna spend, you know, the maximum amount, we were all prepared to do 585. So, I mean, where we're at.
Yeah, I think the goal, the budget was to get as much as we could, yeah.
Whatever that number is.
And we, and some of it could be budgeted this year and some the following year. Doesn't necessarily all have to come out of this year.
So, you don't need the budget now, but you need to make application now?
Right, right.
And do you need anything from us to make application?
Uh, we would need to cut, I, yeah, once I figure out all the information, we would need to come to you. I would, I would come to the council and request approval to make the application.
So, we don't even need to consider that tonight? Correct?
Come back, come back.
Right, okay.
I have another one.
How many?
How many?
A few more.
Well, I have three more, but one of them I'm gonna take out, but I'm gonna tell you why.
Okay, everyone continuing? Okay, go ahead.
The second one is the request for $10,000 for art coordination for the police building. We had been requested to put some money in our budget for the coordination of art for the building from AFF, our architects, so I would like to do that. So, and couple that with my next, and I'll explain this in a minute. My next idea was for $10,000 for outreach coordination supplies for the emergency caches, but I think that would be almost more appropriate next year than this budget, because we don't have them yet. And so, what I would like to do then is move to add $10,000 for art coordination for the police building, so add percent for arts capital line, public safety building, that's what it says here, for $10,000, and then reduce general fund contingencies by $10,000. And I know that's mixing up a couple of things for you, Debbie. Questions?
And I'm sorry, where would the art money come from? General fund contingency, okay.
Reduce in the.
Another 10,000. What does 10,000 get you in art?
It doesn't by the art, it's the coordination with the architect.
What's that mean?
That means you would hire a person that what they do, contractor, consultant, to work with the art community, with the arts committee, and with the architect. And the architect asked for that, because they don't have money in their budget to do that, for art in the building.
What's our art committee doing?
Well, I talked with Nikki, Greg, and, no, that's not art, he's building, but I talked with Nikki, and, and they couldn't really take this on, but they could work with somebody who was actually doing the coordination for the art, for the, identifying the areas and, for the art, like if they're structural, there could be some structural glass, art glass, or even metal brackets for holding beams, that could be an octopus, for example, or something like that. But there needs to be that person that coordinates that between the architect and the art community, so.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Just a question, did this topic come up during Budget Committee?
Yeah.
And was there action taken?
Probably. You might, might even know the answer to that.
No, I'm not. So, the answer was no from Budget Committee?
Probably, or else I wouldn't, yeah.
That's why, that's why I'm bringing it up, so.
I may not have explained it well enough. It's a, it's a consideration that we would have, if you're, if we are going to consider art, which we are, because we have a percentage for art for the police building, we need a way to, to integrate the art with the design of the building. And that's what this does, it was a request from our architects, and I think it would be to our best interest and to the community to provide that.
I think you had some yeses and nos in that.
It was mixed.
Yeah, I think I was a yes on that, I don't recall, but, okay, so, if you wanna make a motion on that?
I think I did, but I'll try it again if Debbie said, thinks that.
I didn't hear the word motion, so.
Okay, okay, I'll do it again. Debbie, if those funds are okay with you, I move to add, let me see, add percent for arts capital line, public safety building for $10,000, and reduce general fund contingencies by $10,000. And this is for the court, art coordination for the police building.
Second.
Motion to second, discussion. Hearing none, good roll call?
Casper?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Walkie?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yes.
And Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Good.
Thank you.
Final?
I just have one more, and, I'm sorry.
That's okay, you don't apologize.
It's my last one, I took one out, I took one out. Just about housing, I just wanted to, there was a lot of discussion at our Budget Committee that perhaps we should've tried to put more money in the workforce housing budget, and, and the amount of the more that we can as council to add to what the, what the Budget Committee did was 10% of total expenditures, or $13,549. But before I make a motion, I just want, does anyone have any idea about this? Thoughts, no, yeah?
Well, I, I do have an idea, and I think I said at Budget Committee, was, we're pretty rich at the moment with land, and, you know, understanding that housing is our number one priority, I'd like to think, we, as a city, have moved ahead and not only purchased land, but we have land that we've put out to bid, and projects, and four of them being housing. So, you know, I, I don't think, at this point, we need to do both, and I think that's a trap you fall into. We can sell land and use that proceeds to fund a housing fund, if you so desire, but I don't think you need to do both.
Okay, anyone else? No? There wasn't?
No, we didn't really, we didn't really, no, I just wanted to see if there, sorry, I just wanted to see if there was any interest for this, because there was, there were comments about that perhaps this other funding could be used to get the properties ready for whatever, I mean, it would be in addition to just purchasing land or whatever. So, that was my intent, but I'm fine with what we have, I just wanted to make sure I brought it up.
All right.
I'll pull it.
Okay, now, back to Resolution 2018.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if I could, pull one out of my hip pocket, so I'd need help, but even, it was reminded again today at public, you know, comments, and we've heard it before around these nuisance buildings and nuisance codes, issues that we don't have any money, that we haven't allocated any money into, I don't know if it's code enforcement, or the area, in order, if, for some reason, we need to buy a dumpster, or rent a dumpster, or relocate people, I'd, I'd like to move some money into, at minimum, but move some money into that account, so we can help enforce our own ordinances. I've, I've understood it to be a stumbling block, that, an oversight on our part, I think. So, I don't know what account that would go into, but would see it coming out of the general fund contingency fund, or something like that. And, you know, I'm thinking, you know, 5,000, 10,000, no more than that.
Just for a little discussion here, I think it'd be very helpful, we have experienced this a couple of times, and within this last year, one is kind of stuck, because there isn't funding to move a couple of things, like a dumpster, and, and we're pulling, we're pulling money from, from other budgets, I hear, that so to have a dedicated, I agree.
I'm still not clear.
Well, for example, nuisance, where you, you have a landlord that won't clean up their place, and the city's kind of caught, because if you really come down on your code enforcement, you're gonna relocate, you're, you're gonna put somebody out. So, you know, I'm looking at, you know, if you help get them out into another apartment, is one example. Others would be, as Counselor Hint, and has talked about, you know, just a dumpster to help move quicker junk that's accumulated in an area, you know, a house.
At the behest of code enforcement.
I, I'm thinking code enforcement, I'm looking at the attorney, if that's where.
The recent, the recent example would be, we had 500 in our code enforcement fund, and Mr. Chancellor, Mr. Chandler authorized it to be used to pump a failed septic tank and provide porta potty, and that pretty much used up our 500 bucks. And so, with that, while that can be leaned on the property, that's all we have. So, the thought was, is there a desire to place more money into a fund that can be used used to abate, city enters and abates violations after following our due process, or with the agreement of the property owner to have the property leaned?
Mr. Chandler, do you see a dollar amount for this?
Well, this is a little bit new territory, so if I was looking at the five or the $10,000, I would probably do $10,000. It seems that these are few and far between, but when they hit, they're expensive, and I think perhaps the most important comment that I heard from Mr. Appicello is that this kind of work does associate itself with a lean on the property, so it's not the idea that it's a giveaway, it's the idea that it helps us to accomplish the goals of the city, and then at some point in time, we would receive those funds back.
Okay, and then this money goes strictly to the physical removal of things to, and transfer people, it doesn't go to the cost of litigation, doesn't go to the cost of anything like that?
Maybe, maybe three, four years ago, we, we did do relocation of some renters, and I don't know exactly what budgetary magic they worked to do that, but that's the only other time it's been used for, you know, the landlord had resources, the renters did not. In this case, we have homeowners that don't have resources.
Got it, okay.
So, do we know an account to help with the motion, that where that $10,000 would go to?
I believe there's a code enforcement line in the police budget, you could put it there, you could put it in non-departmental government.
But is it technically code enforcement? The code has been enforced already.
It's expenses related to enforcing code.
Yep. Mr. Chandler, do you have a thought, or?
The, the, I don't know the number off the top of my head, but the one that Ms. Appicello mentioned, of the $500, that's a good place to put that, I do believe that was in the police budget under that code enforcement.
So could.
It's abatement of a code violation, so.
And then sitting.
Fill in the actual number later, but, you know, the intent is to make a motion to move $10,000 from the general fund contingencies.
To the police operations, yeah.
Second. Motion to second, discussion?
Thank you.
Roll call.
Casper?
Yes.
Walkie?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
And Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, anything else?
Mayor, I'm, I'm sorry, I do have one more item. It's not to drag this out.
You do not have to apologize, does my face look like you need to apologize, I'm sorry.
No, it's just, I know it's just taking a long time. I do have a request to modify, for City Council to consider modifying the Visitor and Convention Bureau budget as well. They have $60,000 budgeted in this current year budget for the website, and there's only like a couple of weeks left in this current year, and it's not going to, the majority of it's not going to be spent, so the request is to move $50,000 of it to next year, and then also to take $30,000 out of the VCB contingency, next year's budget, so that the webs, the webpage budget for next year would be $100,000. That comprises of the $20,000 that's currently in the approved budget, and then $50,000, the motion would be to increase the beginning fund balance by $50,000, and then decrease contingency by $30,000, and change the webpage to $100,000. That all makes sense, okay.
Second.
Motion to second, discussion. Hearing none, roll call.
Walkie?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
And Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Debbie, appreciate it. Okay, anyone else? All right, Resolution 2018-12, adopting the budget.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move to approve Resolution 2018-12, and adopt the amended fiscal year 2018-19 budget.
Second.
Who is the second?
I heard both.
Okay.
Motion to second, discussion. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Walkie?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
And Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, nothing under, did I get through them all? Yeah, except for four, which is coming up, okay. So nothing under ordinances, resolutions, Resolution 2018-08, a resolution of the City of Lincoln City establishing a policy for naming, renaming of parks and recreational facilities, and establishing a policy for commemorative items. Who's on this one?
Thank you, Mayor and counselors.
We really should have budgeted some money for this thing, so that we could have, like, you know, just type their name, it would show up, and a new clock, and get rid of the cheap plastic board.
We can take that out, we'll take that out of VCB's contingency.
That's right, VCB, not parks.
Sponsored by.
Ads got money.
Ads going on underneath.
If we put an octopus on it, that'll work.
Okay, I have two policies I'm, I'm hoping that you will approve, one is commemorative items in parks, and the other one is naming, renaming of parks, recreational facilities, and/or features. Would you like me to describe them, or do you? Okay, great. The commemorative items in parks, I've, I researched a lot of other park agencies, and this one specifically is going towards making memorial items in our parks where people come to us, for example, benches, pavers, that sort of thing. I had focused on just one or two items when I was putting this policy together, and per guidance from city manager and the attorney, I'm making it more generalized because there are always new ideas coming up of what you can commemorate in a city park. I have put down there the cost of benches, of pavers, of flower beds and trees. I have said in the policy too, that that will be updated every year because new items come up, and also cost of installation and the object changes, so that's that policy. And the other one is the naming, renaming of parks, recreational facilities, and/or features, like a tree. And that just goes through the guideline, and if you want to flip to the very end of the policy, I think that summarizes what we're looking at for this, which is having somebody follow the procedure here of how to ask for a name, the rationale for why they are asking for a name for a park or a facility, taking in consideration the neighborhood where this park is, as well as city residents as a whole, and then they have to bring it back to the Parks and Recreation Director, the Parks and Recreation Board for guidance, city manager, and then this is presented to City Council for final exception or rejection of the proposal.
Mr. Mayor, please.
I just, one of those is a quantity of people is needed, or just, you know, some interest, it's kind of vague.
Yeah, I, I kept it pretty generalized, there's no exact quantity that I'm going for, but that's more just to ensure that when we're choosing a name, it comes from the majority of agreement from our community, that they would appreciate that name with the park or facility. Basically, getting public input for it.
Sure.
Yeah.
Mr. Appicello, maybe you can help me, if I missed it, is there anything in here that says any donated items become the property of the city, and there's no expectation of permanence and placement? If we put a bench somewhere, and we've said, yeah, this is where your dad's going to be memorialized forever, and we decide, oops, we've got to change it.
I think it's in there, not exactly the words you use, but it's in there.
It's 10 years.
Okay, thank you.
And then they're given an opportunity first to reapply for that memorial, but it is 10 years limitation.
Okay, but within this 10 years, we have the right to move things?
I believe that one of the things we added was that, that we have the right to control where things go.
That is correct.
Still want a lawsuit?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Is there also a limit to the reapply, is there like?
There isn't.
So that, so it's just after that 10 years, they're the first again to reapply after that 10 years?
Correct, yes, yep.
Any other questions? Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work on this.
Debbie.
Yeah, okay, so, I have a resolution, you want to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution 2018-8, policy for naming parks and for commemorative items.
Okay.
Motion to second, discussion?
I found a few types that I will submit to the city attorney.
Okay, anything else?
I have a question.
Please.
If, if, there's a geographic area that's not a park, or not a recreational area, and it's unnamed, and it's going through the state process, then that would be up to, under the state prevalence, right?
That's correct, yeah, not city.
Right.
Yes.
Anyone else? Okay.
Do you need a roll call?
Yes.
Okay. Anderson?
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Walkie?
Yes.
And Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, did I get through, no, four, here we go. Resolution 2018-06, a resolution of the City of Lincoln City establishing always stop traffic control restrictions at the following three intersections, Northeast 14th Street and Northeast Orr Avenue, Southeast 3rd Street and Southeast Second Place, and Southwest 24th Drive and Southwest Coast Avenue. Anyone sharing with us anything?
This was something that came up at, I think it was a work session, several meetings ago, and at that time, I, I kind of interrupted and said, we can't make this kind of a decision here, the code requires resolution, so it got put on an agenda and then bumped several times, so this is consistent with what was requested by the city engineer at that meeting.
And the maps show where the stop signs will be located.
I think they're all great locations to have more stop signs. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm totally in agreement with this, but I guess I just want to follow a process here, is, was there anything put out to the people who live there that's looking for their input that we needed to do, or we can just go ahead and roll through this and do it?
I, I do not believe that there is any public hearing requirement for this, we did follow our code process, which is one of two processes, the city manager can establish these traffic controls by order, which is then effective 30 days after he issues it, or the council may by resolution enact these. And what we had was, we had a work session where this was included as part of a presentation to council about proposed traffic controls, and again, it was delayed several times, but this is the direction that we received at that meeting.
It's also, Mr. Mayor, it's also important to note that, for example, if you look at the 3rd Street and Second Place, three of those stop signs already exist, so it's adding a fourth one to it. And so when you're looking at these, you're seeing what the stop signs are, but that doesn't necessarily mean that they're all brand new stop signs, so it's improving that. And I do believe that Lila has been in contact with, with the neighborhoods.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
Yeah, I, I live at one of, you know, within a block of one of these, I wasn't notified, but it would have been nice in the other areas to know where there wasn't, I mean, I gather from the white painting on the ground where there was, like for Southwest 24th and Southwest Coast, it looks like there's only one existing stop sign, I'm not too sure, but just as us, you know, looking at it, you know, otherwise I would have had to drive. But my concern is that, you know, sometimes, you know, I've lived here, I don't know, 11 years, and there's never, you know, there hasn't been a stop sign at Southeast 3rd Street. My concern is that other people have been living there for much longer, and that now there's going to be a stop sign possibly, you know, unknown, and like Mr. Anderson's flashing light on Southeast 32nd, could we have a flashing stop sign ahead temporarily as a way to alert our residents that, hey, you know, you may not know this, but here's a stop sign that you have never seen before, and to prevent some really last minute breaking, you know, I think that, a way to, you know, to manage that kind of something, because it's going to come up on you quick, you know, and I just fear that there'll be some.
I think it's kind of normal practice to say, put the sign up or something that says there's a traffic control change ahead. I think that's kind of normal, I've seen them myself, so I'm imagining we'd follow that kind of a process.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
If that's true, it's a great idea, especially on 14th and Orr, I was just driving through there the other day, and, and you really can't see very well in that corner, so. New, new stop signs are a great idea there, and notification of some variety is almost essential there too, because someone isn't going to realize they're there, just.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
So if you look at the, if you look at Exhibit A, 14th and Orr, right now, there are two stop signs for the north-south traffic, this would put stop signs for the east-west traffic, and created it into a four-way stop. As I mentioned, on 3rd, there's three stop signs, does not exist on the eastbound traffic of that intersection, this would put a stop sign there, and then the last one, you have one stop sign on coast on the northbound traffic, this would add two, one on coast for southbound traffic, and one going east on 24th at that intersection, for the eastbound traffic.
That's, that's a horrible intersection.
It's a tough intersection.
Oh my gosh, I hate that.
Mr. Mayor, I, I noticed our city engineer holding up the wall back there, could she just let us know what the process is?
And if someone was going to hold up a wall, I would want it to be an engineer.
There she is.
So the, the process is when we do changing or additions, in this case of a stop sign, we'll make it very evident that there's a change, we, we don't do flashing, but we do, we add a sign that says traffic change ahead, and then we put flags on the stop signs, so it's pretty apparent that there's a new change, and we'll keep that for very long, you know, a couple of weeks. The other thing is, we're going to do 24th, go ahead and do 24th and 3rd, but we plan to do Orr and 14th when we do our sidewalk improvement on 14th, so it'll be part of a bigger project, and we will do some public outreach for that one, that's a very busy street.
And the next is at the bottom of coast, right there, that three-way, where nobody stops for the stop signs anyway, because we have such huge visibility there, I watch it daily, because we've got that field of vision so wide, nobody even stops.
No, you, you're talking about another intersection?
Yeah, just at the bottom of coast.
Further down?
Put you at about 26, 25-ish.
I'll take a look at that.
Yeah, it's, it's bad, especially, as Counselor Hogan said, or someone said, when we, we have an accident on the Highway 101, it, it becomes a de facto highway, and it's, it's just terrible down there.
I'll take a look at that.
Especially with side alley feeding into it, so, anyway, okay, that answers your questions? Wonderful, thank you, appreciate it. Where are we at in this?
You have a motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
I move Resolution 2018-06, a resolution of the City of Lincoln City establishing always stop traffic control restrictions at the following three intersections, Northeast 14th Street and Northeast Orr Avenue, Southeast 3rd Street and Southeast Second Place, and Southwest 24th Drive and Southwest Coast Avenue.
Second.
Motion to second, discussion. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Hoagland?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Walkie?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
And Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, okay, so I got through all those, right? We're moving smoothly into K.
Yes, but, Mr. Mayor, may I ask a favor on this? Item number 15, we do have a guest that has been patiently waiting for this, we may want to, if, if that can be moved up in front of the VCB, I would appreciate that.
We can move it right up and, right now, if you want, so, with okay of the council?
Yes.
Sure. We're going to move on to 15, authorization for city manager to negotiate and enter into contract with Emmerich Construction Company.
So I want to invite Mr. David Dwyer to come up, he is our owner representative, representative from the Klosch Corporation, while he's coming up, so this is in connection with the, the CMGC contract, I'm going to let him do the bulk of the work on this, but we, tonight, we are prepared to present to you the name of a company that we would like to, your authorization to allow me to negotiate and enter into contract with Emmerich Construction, so.
Is there anything specific you want me to?
Brief, and then any questions.
Hold the microphone around, introduce yourself.
Can you hear me okay? David Dwyer with the Klosch Group, as you already resolved earlier today about the CMGC process, so after the, the bidding process, in order to bring on the CMGC partner, as you've just talked about, we are prepared now to recommend to, before with authorizing That process will happen hopefully in the next, you know, short term to use the contract, the AIA 201-133, which is a CMGC contract that council has already reviewed. In the process of selecting the Emmerich, we believe that through our evaluation that they're the best partner, that bring the best value in terms of the team, the team, the experts, the project manager, the superintendent, the estimating department. In addition, they're also, they have the best approach on how to help us with our objectives, meeting schedule, meeting budget, and notwithstanding their technical expertise with coastal work and police stations or public safety projects. So given those elements, you know, I believe they're best poised to help us as a partner, as one of the design team, and the CMGC working collaboratively is really what makes and breaks a project. So that's why their team is best fit with our team. Any one of those firms, by the way, could have built this, but it's really about having the best partner onboard early. So I can answer any questions at this point, or any other description of the process we went through, or whatever else you'd like to know.
Well, I don't want the lack of questions from us to reflect that we haven't been following this for the folks
Sure.
... on TV who are watching us, that we've been on this from day one, and are satisfied with your knowledge and expertise and your ability to look out for the interests of the city. So thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to authorize the city manager to negotiate and enter into a contract with Emmerich Construction Company and to provide CM slash GC services for the Police Department facility project.
Second.
Motion to second, discussion. Hearing none. Roll call, just because, why not? The contract.
Hinton?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Walke?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
And Mr. Hoagland is not here, and Mayor Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Ron, for reminding us of that. Thank you, David.
You're welcome.
Okay, now, Mr. Mayor, may I have one more?
Oh.
We have Diane Lynn here, who's also patiently waiting, and I really would like to get the, these guests out before this
All right.
... we finish up with staff.
And I apologize, this is for?
Fourteen.
Fourteen.
Number fourteen.
Council, okay with that?
Yep.
All right, fourteen, come on up. Workforce Housing, Home Ownership, Proud Ground, Lincoln County, I'm sorry, Lincoln Community Land Trust.
So this is actually a request on, that we brought to you on behalf of Proud Ground and the Land Trust, which, as you know, addresses workforce housing, homeownership opportunities in Lincoln County. Diane Lynn is here. She's the executive director of Proud Ground, which is the land trust in the Portland metro area. I think you should have her request in your packet, and we've also provided an updated motion that the City of Newport has passed last week. This is about our three, I guess it's technically a four-party memorandum of understanding in efforts to increase workforce housing. Take it away, Diane.
Thank you so much, and thank you, city manager, for allowing me to step up at this point in the evening, too. I really appreciate the time with you tonight. We are making a pretty simple request to extend the period of time that we need to match the clients we're looking for, working with out in the community. I'll explain that process briefly with units of housing that we, that you all helped really support our ability to do. We're working on two grants here in Lincoln City, three in Newport, and what we've come to find is that if a family hasn't really considered the prospect of purchasing a home, it turns out that many of them need more time to put a few things in order. We've been doing information sessions, literally talked to quite a range of people out there, and we are working with the major employers to talk to them about people who are employed, because there's four major components in home buying. I'm sure as most of you know, if not all, that there has to be an employment history. We have to have a credit score that's reasonable for the conventional loan that they will bring to the table. They need to have any judgments or issues of the past resolved, and a debt-to-income ratio that's appropriate for our lenders. And it, for some families who haven't thought that this was possible for them, because a $64,000 grant is available now in the community, sometimes they just need to get a few things taken care of, a few things paid off, a few things in order. So together with our partners at Willamette Valley, we, Housing Services, who are in the process of a very, very important merger, they were really underfunded by the state of Oregon to really work with families over the course of time. Our original plan was really have them take the lead here in Lincoln County, because they are the official housing center for the state of Oregon. The problem is, there's just so very little money provided for these services for counseling and education for home buyers, that it just takes more time than we had anticipated. We have one shopper out there now in Newport looking for a unit. She has been pre-approved, and there's another family up here that we're very hopeful for. We do have more information sessions scheduled, and we've got a pretty aggressive outreach plan of action. We're working with local realtors, again, major employers. So this request is really to match what we achieved in the City of Newport a week ago tonight. Yeah, just a week ago, where they agreed that they did want to see progress from us, as we do, too, as a team, that there would be at least one home sold in each of the two larger cities of the, of the community by the end of the year. And if that were to happen, then we can extend the period of time into next year. In a perfect world, we will overachieve that. That's certainly our goal. We want to move these grants out to the community as quickly as possible, and we're really on a mission to do just that. It does help us, and I think it's entirely appropriate for you to look to us for updates and status reports as we go forward, and by the end of the year, for sure, one way or the other, whether this is automatically extended or not. It is very important that you would consider passing the very same language as the City of Newport did, so we don't have to go back to them and make an amendment to their, their language, and we'll be taking the very same language to the county through Commissioner Claire Hall. One thing I'd like to share before I take your questions is that on the heels of these five grants in the county, we really are very excited. If you haven't already heard, we did receive a substantial grant from the state of Oregon as a pilot project. In fact, we were in the, met and had lunch with the governor earlier today with other jurisdictions and entities around the state. Only five were chosen out of about thirty different applications to receive this workforce housing grant. It's a half a million dollars. It'll be coming to this community. We're going to be taking all the people in the queue that we're working with now, that may or may not get the origin, these five original grants, but that could receive some of the resources, because this is going to come in, for the most part, in the form of subsidy for working families to get into more workforce housing units, permanently affordable homeownership units, in the next year or so, hopefully very quickly. On the heels of that, we're going to be doing applications for the state lift program, bond funds that we've talked with you all about in the past. We're very hopeful there'll be projects up here and in Newport that will qualify for lift funds. That's about seventy-five, at least $65,000 to $75,000 a unit for, for homeownership for the first time in Oregon's history. So, and there are other projects out there that we're working on in partnership with other entities, including Habitat for Humanity in, in the Portland area and around the state with the new lift funds. So a lot of good stuff in the pipeline. What we're asking for tonight is a little more time to make sure we match the, the best family, the families that are really ready to purchase with the five grants that we have established to this point, and I'd be very happy to answer your questions.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
I have a copy of the Newport's motion and all that stuff, and it appears that they've extended for six months.
Right.
With an additional six months, if you perform. What I'm trying to get a hold of is, what's the additional cost to Lincoln City by extending to twelve months?
None whatsoever, no additional cost.
Right. So, and that's what I came up with, too, so thank you. So what I hear you saying is momentum certainly has been slow, lost some partners who you thought were doing job of educating and reaching out. Now that's gearing up, where you've got people in the hopper and more money coming from the state. Personally, I don't want to lose your momentum and any kind of a pool of potential people, because you're not even able to get one in the next six months. So am I reading this incorrectly, or, you know, there's no harm to Lincoln City by extending this for twelve months?
I really appreciate your question about this, because it would be heartbreaking to get that close.
Right.
And we're able, and in fact, we would come back and just simply ask for an additional extension if for some reason, now, again, many of you know who've purchased a home, that even when you're, everything's aligned to go forward, there's still a sixty to ninety day closing window. So that means we've got to get people aligned this fall in order to close by the end of the year. I'm really quite happy to come back again by the end of the year and give you all a status report. I think that's entirely appropriate. If for some reason we just missed the mark on that timing, and it will be up to all of you to decide to continue on. You're absolutely right, we're going to be, you know, we've been reluctant in many, several years past, that if you set people up for homeownership and there's simply no opportunities, that's, that's setting up unfair expectations for people. But now that we know that this money is in the queue, people who've worked over ten years' time building this community land trust, this homeownership opportunity, it really kind of, we're really right there at the point, and I, it would really be best for us at this juncture to just approve the exact language. And we're, again, if we, if we have to come back, we will. We'll explain where we are.
So approve, you're asking us to approve the six month, what, Newport?
Yes, the exact language Newport did.
See, I'm having trouble with why Newport came, and you've still got a third leg, the county.
That's right, yeah.
So, you know, two of us could go twelve months, the county and Lincoln City, and make Newport, you know, wise up. I, I don't know what their problem is, because I don't want to lose an opportunity for Lincoln City North County residents with you building momentum, unless for some reason Newport's having to pay costs. It just doesn't make sense, because nobody's doing what you're doing, so there's not competition. So I'm, I'm sorry, but I'm going to go with the twelve months and make you go back to Newport.
So appreciate the sentiment. You know, if the worst-case scenario is that we come back and ask you for that extra time, that, that's really acceptable for us right now. Newport has about $32,000 from their housing fund on the table, and that's, that's in a holding pattern. There's no more, we're not going to request more, but I understand that they would really like to hear from us, wants us, they want us to stay in touch, they want to, you know, report on our progress. We're very excited about the good news and what's coming in, you know, on the heels of this, and I think they, they are supportive of all that. So just as a practical matter, I think if, if we could get support for what was inappropriate from where we sit, compromise, but it's certainly up to you, and I'm not so sure that it would definitely necessarily cause us to have to go back if you went twelve months. I'm wondering about that. Would you have an idea? Would it matter?
We're signing the same document.
I still think it's better to sync up. This has been a three-way partnership all along, and it would probably be better to sync up, but we'd have to rethink it if we, if we.
You know, Mr. Mayor, I'm often criticizing Salem, because legislators may give me the answer that, you know, it's bad legislation, but we didn't have a choice, bad legislation. So I'm not interested in bad legislation, so, thank you.
And thank you for your interest in the land trust, and Diana, you've been sitting in on meetings. We really appreciate your interest in your tracking the information, and we have had really direct involvement from both jurisdictions, all three jurisdictions.
Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
I just, I just have a clarifying question, I guess. So you're okay with money? You've got these little pools of money that are bubbling up, which is wonderful, and perhaps you have houses, or would have, or will have, but maybe the weak link in all of this is getting the people prepared and to get settled in. So your outreach, has it kind of buffed up a little bit over the last couple of months?
Yeah, it's a very fair question. I, we are, the Proud Ground team is a HUD-certified counseling and education operation, and we're also a brokerage. So we can bring the skills. It's just, we want, we want to be very effective at doing it here. It's a little farther afield. We'll probably be bringing in some reinforcements in, here in the local community, and we have some ideas for who we're going to bring in, because while we have more information sessions scheduled, it takes more than that. And I think people really need to hear it several different times to realize. Commissioner Hall and I were on a radio station, a radio show just a couple of weeks ago, talking about the opportunities, and the phone's not ringing off the hook yet, because I think it just needs to sink in long enough for people to realize that this is really an extraordinary opportunity for them. So yes, we will bolster our efforts, and we'll continue to partner with the other agencies that do really good, solid work here. I'm really not trying to cast any shadows on anybody else's hard work. It's, it's tricky to get people to recognize what it is they can do. And by the way, a final point, it's just a residual benefit, too, that people get their finances in better order, that their, their financial fitness is a, just a great kind of benefit if that, if that's improved, no matter whether they buy or not.
So I have a question, if I may, too. I guess first and foremost, can you tell me what your definition of a home is or a house?
Well, these, what we're talking about here are single-family homes. We shoot for two.
Stick belt?
Yes, these are existing units of housing in the community.
Condos?
No, we would consider a condo if it were accessible or inappropriate. The homes we're looking for need to be in decent shape, energy efficient and durable. They have to meet a certain standard. But we're looking for family-sized homes.
Okay, and manufactured homes, so would land be part of this deal? I mean, these are the most affordable options, and I don't know if you're exploring that or not.
We are, we are looking at whatever. We don't, we don't normally and haven't really used manufactured homes, because the community land trust model relies on appreciation over time, so the family can earn some equity in their home, and mobile homes don't really appreciate at all.
No, manufactured, not.
Many, the important difference, if there, if there's a foundation and it meets criteria, you know, we would, whatever actually appreciates, that's the criteria, really.
Okay. Okay, and then secondly, just, I kind of got lost in the explanation for what Council Anderson was asking. What's the risk of sending us back to Newport? Will they say, "No, we don't have time tonight to vote," or what's the downside to asking them to go to twelve?
It's a logistical challenge. Just, they've had their meeting last week. I'm not sure when they meet again, I imagine.
Two weeks.
And we're trying to do this before the end of the fiscal year. Again, I appreciate the extended, and originally, we thought maybe just asking for an extension for a year would just give us plenty of time to close all these homes and just make it work. There is one other small component, which is we've been really waiting to show you all results before we make some organizational changes, too, and that will come back to you by the end of the year, too.
But I'm still trying to wrap my head around what I'm going to vote for. So if I say, "No to the six, I want twelve," what does that do to you?
I think I would probably have to go back and ask the city council of Newport to consider approving a twelve, twelve-month extension.
And because they're such nice people, they would do it in a heartbeat, right? And put you right on their agenda.
Apparently not, because they didn't do this a week ago. I can't be guaranteed, we can't be guaranteed there wouldn't be a disagreement between the jurisdictions.
So, Mr. Mayor, the follow-up question is, since we weren't there, could you share with us, for heaven's sakes, what the rationale would be from them? with us, for heaven's sakes, what the rationale would be from them?
My honest assessment of what I heard from them and their questions and the city manager's recommendation was just to kind of guarantee that there would be a check-in point by the end of the year, that at least two of the five homes would be sold, that we were making that much progress by that point. It's potentially a pro forma check-in, but it's, once again, it's acceptable for us to do that. I think that's what they're thinking. Probably a measure of caution, perhaps.
I'm torn, I mean, I want you to have what you want to have, what you need, I want to help people. And, you know, if you're telling me the six is good by you, I guess I'd have to be okay with it. I would prefer that Newport steps up and joins us and the county.
Mr. Mayor, I have a suggestion. How about if we consider the six month with a message to take back to Newport? You're killing us here.
If you adopt the same language, I do think a message between your, you know, managers, perhaps, that there's every intention of continuing this on, that would mean a lot to us, just to say, hey, look, if this takes a year, that's only a couple more months beyond what you've said, and that'll give us, you know, the assurance we need to be sure that we are going to be able to, like you said, continue our momentum forward.
Okay, any comments? Okay. A motion?
Mr. Mayor, one last, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Didn't you also say you wanted to end this by the fiscal year?
Well, we'll, we certainly want to move all five grants by the, oh, yes, it would be, sorry, our fiscal year's calendar year, so.
I thought you meant...
I think you're speaking to the MOU change request, yes.
Okay.
I think this MOU currently expires at the end of this current fiscal year, which is why we brought it to you now.
End of June?
Yes.
Okay, so that's also a timeline you're looking at?
That's right.
Mr. Appicello, can we structure a motion that would say yes to this with the provision that if Newport would adopt a 12-month, we would automatically go to that 12-month?
I really don't see why not.
Why don't we do it the other way?
But it's a MOU.
Well, whatever, I'm just trying to help these poor folks out and get this moving. So I'm not seeing a lot of motion to, or movement to make the motion tonight to get this done.
If I could, this is an MOU with multiple jurisdictions plus Proud Ground, and I think they need identical language because it's not just with Proud Ground, it's with the other three entities, so...
That's what I'm saying, we would give them that, but if they could go back to Newport to adopt what we just did, we wouldn't have to hear it again.
I don't think that's happening.
Well, okay.
That's just, anyway.
Yeah, it's kind of who's on first, and Newport did get it on their agenda before we did, so that's why we're, that's why we're here.
I really don't care. All right, so I'm leaving the council.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I could, in my discussions with, if I could, in my discussions with the city manager, they're anxious to see something done, and they want to keep the pressure on, and I actually kind of agree with them. It would be very nice to see, we've been waiting a long time to see some homes produced. Between the three cities, we've contributed $270,000 and over the last three years. So I do know from their city manager that they want to keep the pressure on to see some, some results of this, and I would have to agree with them on that.
Mr. Mayor, I don't know how that, Ron, I appreciate what you're saying and what you're just translating, I don't know how that keeps pressure on, because what I'm fearful of is Newport will do their Newport thing and not extend, you, for whatever reason, this one applicant doesn't follow through, right on the verge of, you know, a pent-up group that we go through all the effort, we, Proud Ground goes, of educating and finding reluctant homebuyers, but finally getting them into the mainstream, and they do it to us again. If it's a three-way, you know, that's why I, I don't feel, it's not, we're not writing any checks to Proud Ground. Their is motive, they're going to have egg on their face if they don't use their $500,000 from the state in this county and our own money. I mean, as far as I'm concerned, they've got their reputation on the line. And for heaven's, I like motivation of all things, I just don't see the rationale with Newport, and, you know, I think, I'd like to think our three county commissioners could recognize as well, so it'd be two against Newport, and they need to finally come to the table. From what I know, they don't have any use for their money that's sitting in the pot anyway, like it's burning a hole in their pocket.
Let me ask one more question.
Yes, please.
I'm just curious, I read something somewhere, can't tell you where or when, recently about Newport, and that they're moving forward, I think with you and with some of the Wilder property. Do you know anything about that? Or am I just making this up? I had a dream, I don't know.
You're not making it up. There is a real, high probability that we'll be working with Wilder Development in South Newport to bring in some lift funds. They're not quite ready for the first round for a variety of reasons, but we're really hopeful for the second round. And this is work that's gone into just very strong advocacy in Salem to bring these resources to places like Lincoln County, so we are very hopeful about that project.
Do we get a motion or a no motion, or have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd move to have the City Council authorize the city manager to enter into a 12-month extension of the MOU expiring June 30th, 2019.
Oh, I see, okay, I'm sorry. Yes, okay. Can you second? I'll second that. We have a motion in a second, discussion.
Yeah, if you could just one more time say why you're doing 12 months instead of the six, just as a clarification. Because you don't feel six months is enough time?
Right. If right now, my rationale is they've only, their pool of potential homebuyers doesn't really exist. They've got one maybe for sure in Newport and a half one here.
Sure.
They, from what I understand, they being Proud Ground, has to now do their own work of finding these folks, educating them, and getting them cleaned up, ready to be a homebuyer.
Sure.
And you don't do just onesie twosies, you know, you try to do mass through. So you're going to, we're asking them to get more than one person excited about homeownership at the potential of dropping the ball for those potential homebuyers in a six-month. And I can feel Newport with their six-month thing saying, no, you didn't deliver on our one candidate.
As a way to say, well, there you go, now we're done.
And, you know, if you kind of watch how they've played it, so, since it's not costing us anything, and that's what I'm looking, it's not costing the city of Lincoln City anything, all we have to do is gain by using them to get our people educated and prepared, and using our money as well as state money to buy a house.
And they have limits to their, you have a time limit for your grant funding to be the end of this fiscal year, correct?
Yes, this fiscal year, that's why we're here.
Our fiscal year.
Yes, your fiscal year.
Which is June, June 19.
June 30th of 19. Yeah, so, all right, all right, thanks.
Other discussion?
One more question. Does, in your perception, does the idea of having a summer break do anything with getting people together to organize training, would that be a deterrent also to getting people to come together because of the summer season?
You know, I'm curious about whether or not that's true here in Lincoln County, given summertime activities, but it's usually a great buying season, to be honest. We're very hopeful to get people excited, better time to look at a house, better time to consider moving. Yeah, we'd hate to get stuck, the worst months of the year, of course, in terms of real estate, is always the dead of winter. So we don't see any lull right now. And I'm also sitting here wondering, if you do go 12 months, could we, you know, write that into the MOU that Lincoln City said, the 12-month extension, and like Newport said, six-month check-in and extension? I mean, we could find out whether or not that has, that's a way to go. To be perfectly candid, the time we spend going through some of these processes, the time away from what we really want to do, which is get families into homes, so I would put that out there.
I don't want to keep beating this dead horse, I'm going to do a roll call just because we seem a little divided, so if you do a roll call, please.
Wilkie?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hoakland?
Yes.
Hinton? The reluctant, yes. Casper?
Yes.
And Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, so...
We'll take it from here, thank you all so very much.
You need any letters of support or derision, let us know.
Thank you.
Or accompaniment. Accompaniment.
Yeah, we'll be happy to lean on Newport.
Thank you all again.
And thank you for all you do. Hopefully some people moved into some homes. All right, I have completely, I have so many arrows on this piece of paper. We're at 11 approval of the 2018, 2021 collective bargaining agreement between the city of Lincoln City and the American Federation of State, County, Municipal Employees.
City Council, as you are aware, we negotiated with AFSMI at the end of April, and we came to a tentative agreement on May 29th, the, the union, thank you, sorry, ratified the contract, so now this is before you for final ratification and approval for implementation. And it is staff's recommendation that you do that, and if you have any questions, I...
And this is, AFSMI is the Public Employees Union?
Correct.
Not the police?
Correct, this is our other union that represents most of our city employees. It's a three-year contract, will expire at the end of 2021.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
May I ask a question? When did you say that they ratified it?
May 29th. Thank you. I think that's the date I have on my council communication?
Probably, I just don't have.
Yes, May 29th.
Mr. Mayor? Yes. Is it, I mean, if it's the non-police, but it also includes police?
No, so the police union is covered under the Lincoln City, it's LCPEA, Lincoln City Police Employees Association, and their contract is, was a year before we did their contract, so we have theirs first, then we have AFSMI the next year, and then we have about a year breather, and then we go back into negotiations again for the police in 2020.
So we're matching our AFSMI to the police?
No, what we did is, we moved the articles around in the contract to mirror the language and articles in the police contract for ease in when we're trying to interpret the two different contracts, that it's easier for us to identify what section it is in, and minor cleanup of language. It was no change of intent, it was just making it so that vacation was the same section in both contracts.
Thank you for clarifying.
Yes.
I just, when I was reading this, there are a couple of things that just stood out to me, just as questions. Article eight, section five, boot allowance?
Yes.
It went from 125 reimbursement for boots to 200. So it's been years since I bought a pair of boots, but is there, is that how much they are now, or is it like twice a year to buy it?
They're, these are boots that are used by the public works and streets departments, and they're better quality boots, they usually have about a year lifetime. And they run, a lot of the guys buy boots that are more than $200 because of the quality of them, and for, even, not even the highest quality, you can't get anything less than 175. So this is to help offset something that they have to do as part of their job.
Okay, that's fine, I was just curious, and the other thing was the COLA?
Yes.
For July 1, 2018, 3.9, and then 2019 and 2020, is that two? I'm just curious where, is there some formula or something for COLA?
So the 3.9% for this year was based on the CPI for 2017, which came in at 3.9%.
Oh, my goodness.
The 20, for 2019 and 2020, we negotiated the same COLA that the police department is getting in, in last year's contract with the police department, we negotiated straight across the board 2% for each year of the contract. And so basically trying to bring them together with, you know, in fair compensation, that they're both fairly compensated with similar COLAs.
And Ron, if I may, if it's an appropriate time, I think I wanted to say congratulations to Colleen and thank her for all the hard work on this. If you might mention just a little bit of what she'd done for us?
Sure. One of the things that we decided on this contract was that we would not hire an outside consultant, so that Colleen would become our chief negotiator in this, along with some of our other employees. She has worked diligently over the last couple of years in building the relationships necessary to go forward. So we were very pleased with how it turned out, Colleen's leadership was terrific, and, and, you know, really hats off to the job well done that she did, and then also with the management team that represented the city.
Because I remember it was, the first one I went through, it was meeting after meeting after meeting after meeting, and this was condensed, just in a amazing way.
We were able to negotiate this contract in one day in one meeting, which is unheard of, and the union was very pessimistic that that would happen, and we did, it really was about a six hours total that we spent negotiating. The first half of the day was on language, the second half of the day was on the monetary, and...
I just wanted to make sure that was brought up and thank you publicly.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I contribute that to the relationships that I have worked on with the union leadership over the last two and a half years, and it's, the approach I take is a collaborative approach to negotiations. I find that that's a much more successful way of negotiating, and that's done by laying out the framework as you're going along and developing that relationship, and it's my hope to continue that when, as we go into the negotiations with the police in the next contract as well.
Well done, thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move for approval of the 2018, 2021 collective bargaining agreement between the city of Lincoln City and the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees.
Second.
Motion second, discussion. Hearing none, roll call.
Wilkie?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Hoakland?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
And Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you again, Colleen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ron, for letting Colleen have it.
Thank you.
Good job. All right, presentation on VCB on explored Lincoln City DBA adoption. You have five minutes.
We'll get through it quicker than a...
Yeah, serious. Where's the shirt, the hat, the necklace?
You have to approve it before I can make the stuff.
I saw it on the side of a truck, I mean, I don't know how much more approval you can get.
Okay, I'm here to talk to Ed Dryst with the Lincoln City Visitor and Convention Bureau, which is a mouthful, which is one of the things we want to talk about today. We're, we've been going back and forth upstairs in the VCB about how we present ourselves. You know, if you get a grant from the VCB, in theory, you're supposed to add things to your ads and your promotion that say, "Funding provided by the Lincoln City Visitor and Convention Bureau." I've been terrible at enforcing that because it's a mouthful, it's clutter, doesn't really tell the visitor anything about our city or give them a reason to come here. tell the visitor anything about our city or give them a reason to come here. Our name sounds governmental, it's too long. It is kind of an attempt to be authoritative, but it's not warm, and it's not friendly, and it's not inviting. It's pretty close to meaningless to our guests. And like I just told you, it really adds clutter when we force other people to use it. If you look at other folks, and I'm not suggesting that we literally change the name of the VCB, we just want to set up a doing business as, a DBA. And a lot of other folks have done it. The Albany Visitors Association, they call themselves Sea Albany. Coos Bay North Bend Visitor and Convention Bureau, they call themselves Oregon's Adventure Coast, and on and on and on. You know, you look at some of the regionals, it's the same thing. The Clackamas County Tourists and Cultural Affairs is really Oregon's Mount Hood Territory. That's what they go by. And you look at the big kahuna, Travel Oregon, they're actually the Oregon Tourism Commission, and they do business as Travel Oregon. We want to do the same thing with Lincoln City. We need a name that communicates that we represent this wonderful beach town full of unique surprises at every turn. We want to hint at the scope of our seven and a half mile long town. We want to inherently communicate both an invitation to visit and a call to action. And we want to give marketing partners an element, well, we require them to put it in their advertising, that adds value to their creative, not clutter. What we want to do is go from being the Visitor and Convention Bureau of Lincoln City to Explore Lincoln City. It's one thing to visit a place, you know, it's good for a small town. It's another thing to explore. That one word says that we have a lot of stuff here, that you can come here and go down our full seven and a half miles and find things. Explore in one word sums up what we're all about. And brings that whole thing to life. It's an invitation. It explains that we're big. It says that there's a lot to do here. And I really think it works a lot better than the long, big, wordy thing that we have right now. It says, again, we're big enough, we offer a lot of fun, we're inviting, and with a dot com, which we've already registered, which I think already flips you into our website.
That's a little presumptuous, Ron.
Oh, you wouldn't believe what we-
Hi.
You can also go to sevemilesofsmiles.com, and we've done a bunch of them, and we've been quiet while we're doing it. You know how to learn more. So in just a couple of words and something you can read at a glance, it does a lot of things that our current name doesn't do. We've already done an exploration of how the logo could work, horizontal and vertical. We can get it to work with our dear friend, the octopus, and it works very, very well. In the advertising, again, if you look at that versus our current name, it's an invitation to visit, it's an explanation that we're big enough to go exploring. Same thing with digital. When you're working with banner ads and digital ads, when you're working with outdoor, you have to work at a glance, you know? You can't give people a whole bunch of stuff to read. This allows us to do that. Now, if you don't like this direction, if you really feel that we need to be governmental, that we need to be that authoritative figure, that we need to show that we're proud to be city government, we do have an alternative. Mr. Mayor?
Should be a-
Say it in a word.
Be an octopus, armed.
That's true. That's true. But in all seriousness, we would-
Could we change Explore to Octung? Is that it?
Let's not go there.
Oh, the hammer and sickle's cool, though. All right. Just checking.
We could do like four of each, you know? But in all seriousness, we would like to humbly request that City Council give us permission to keep the Lincoln City Visitor and Convention Bureau, but also develop a DBA, a doing business as, Explore Lincoln City, which will allow us to clean up our communications and I think do a far better job than we're doing now.
My question is, if we approve this tonight, can I start using it right away?
Sure. Deal.
Mr. Mayor?
I'll send you the logo tomorrow morning.
Yeah. Counselor Casper?
I was in a class last week at the community college, and a discussion of being a tourist in Europe and here, and how our tourists are leaving our area in a disaster sometimes with garbage and, you know, not taking care of it. And the discussion came up, the dichotomy between being a visitor and a tourist. And if you're a visitor, you come to visit things and people, and you appreciate what we who live here appreciate and cherish. You're a guest. Whereas if you're a tourist, you come, you explore, you take everything, you, you know, leave stuff behind. You're not respectful. And I would hope, whatever you choose, that somehow we could make a definite impression to people to be respectful, that they are our guests. They're not, we're not here to wait on you. Please, you know, respect where we live, because we don't want to pick up after you.
Yeah, I agree wholeheartedly.
Well, I'll add mine. I am here to serve, and I am here to pick up after. That's what I do for a living. So I understand what you're saying, though, but there are some of us who are here to do that. Where was I going with my question here? I'm good with this. I'm still, I'd like to gauge your interest in what I brought up before about getting rid of convention and changing it to conference. Do you think that has any merit?
I think that would happen under this umbrella. I mean, one of the discussions we're having right now, we do not have a very good group function within the VCB. And, you know, we're not staffed to do it. I doubt we'll ever be staffed to do it. But we do have resources, we do have money. We had a preliminary meeting with Chinookwens Casino Resort to see if there was interest in working with them on a 50/50 cooperative basis to do things like go to the bridal show up in Portland, which we're not doing right now. I'm basically taking the shows and the group opportunities that we don't have the resources to go after, and basically doubling each of our budgets. And they said, definitely, yes, let's do it. Now, the next thing to do is to say, well, let's not do it half and half. Let's do it a third, a third, and a third, with that final third being hotel properties, event venues, other things in town, to where the budget and effort and staffing I have that I can put against things that will bring groups into town gets multiplied by three. So that's kind of the game plan right now. We'll build that into a program, and, you know, the word conference would fit very well there.
Okay. Yeah, I'll save it for another night's discussion, but I keep bringing up Ben because I get to go there now. And the place where we have a timeshare has its own conference center, and it handles about 300 people. And it's busy every single weekend. And I don't know if that's maybe something we can discuss, whether it's a city, something the city should take care of, but I think it's something worth discussing, so.
Could I bring up something?
Sure. I just don't want to get too far off of what we're talking about tonight.
It's just a little bit off of what we're talking about. It's back to Poopy Pants. The-
I'm sorry.
I know, I've been teasing you about this. The, if you wouldn't, fine, I just want to bring it up just for a second.
That's the name you came up with. I was going to ask if we have a name.
No, see, there we go. Poopy Pants.
Okay.
Somebody mentioned that to me, and when they did, that's, of course, all I see when I see the, you know, the lower part of our octopus there. Just bringing it up, that's all.
Does it have a name yet?
I like Explore.
No, we haven't named him yet.
Explorer.
We'll-
There you go. Call him Explorer. He's done.
Once we start getting things in place and get past some of the grunt work, we want to have some fun with it. We want to have a contest where whoever can come up with the most octopus is spotted in Lincoln City can win something, and a naming contest would be a lot of fun. And yeah, there's things like that we want to do.
Mr. Mayor? So check out ron'sreport.org. Microphone?
So check out ron'sreport.org for a little bit of a history on the octopus in Lincoln City. I think people will be surprised, there's quite a bit there.
Yeah, it was good. Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, yeah. Is it, if, since we're talking about the octopus, it has to be that octopus? It can't be a different-looking octopus? I mean, not one person has told me they like the way that thing looks. Honest to God.
That's cool.
I mean, yeah, an octopus, but, I mean, I'm just asking you. Is it that, is it set in stone now that that's the octopus?
That's going to be our base octopus, yeah. But the whole thing is designed to be modular. I'm sure you've seen some of the executions where it's a hint at the octopus with the tentacles and whatnot. You'll see that whole thing morph and, you know-
I hope that thing morphs into a better-looking octopus. I'm telling you, I mean, I'm serious. That thing is ugly. Anyway, the difference between DBA and marketing is what? If you can market Explore Lincoln City and the necessity for being a DBA, if you can explain that difference?
We want it to be our department's name, okay? And to go out and present ourselves in, as a business, basically, as a governmental entity, as something other than our real name. And our city attorney can probably explain it better than I can. We want to be able to act as a legal entity, and that allows us to do that without jumping through all the hoops and hurdles of changing our original name.
Okay.
Is that accurate, Richard?
Well, DBA is a name that you're going to be recognized to use, but I've told you before, you're the city. You're not a legal entity aside from the city, so.
So in that, you know, we're requesting a part of the, an arm of the government without people's input, you know? And so you're asking us to change it tonight, right? I mean, you're looking for approval tonight.
I was hoping for that, yes.
Without, you know, without, you know, people having the opportunity to say, you know, yeah, sure, or not, no, no, or whatever. So have you at the VCB done outreach outside of your employees? What do you think to people as far as Explore Lincoln City?
I'll be honest with you, it's been informal conversation, and it's been in the context of, gee, do you think visit would work, or travel, or, you know, some of the other ones. And the whole rationale that it makes us different because it makes us bigger, and it makes us have a perception of more to do, has resonated with the folks we've talked to. Have we gone out and do stakeholder, done stakeholder interviews with it? No.
Sure.
But the little bit of informal we've had, talk we've had with people, it seems to resonate with them.
Is the water and finance going to be like life at Lincoln City?
You'll have to talk to Lila about that one.
Was that everything, then, Ed?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay. You're looking for-
My comment was that so many other cities have done this, and so many of them are travel so-and-so or visit so-and-so. And I really like Explore. It's, it's-
Yeah, I'm glad you-
It says more.
I'm glad you explained this, because when I saw it on the agenda, I'm going, what? There's no way we're changing the name of the VCB to Explore.
Yeah, and I do owe counsel an apology. As much as we taught ourselves as the digital experts and everything, apparently, when we did the thing on Minute Track to explain to you what this was, someone, that being me, didn't hit the right save button, and it came through as a blank form, so I apologize.
All right. So looking for motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd make the motion to have council approve the changing the Consumer Face name of the VCB to Explore Lincoln City.
Second.
Motion to second. Discussion. Ed, does that work for you, what the motion was? The Consumer Face?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right. Any further discussion?
Just not, you know, the need to open it up to people, I mean, just us.
Okay. Do we need a roll call? I don't think so. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Ed.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Good work. Oh, yeah, nevermind.
Except for Poopy Pants.
I can't, Kate, how are you going to put that in the minutes? I want to know where Poopy Pants is going to show up and how we get to-
I have to discuss that with Kate.
P-O-O-P-Y. A-N-T-S.
I'm going to love reading that. Okay, that finishes all of that special order business, and now, Mr. Townsend. Mr. Townsend, your turn.
Very quick thing. The Department of Land Conservation and Development is offering some grants through their Oregon Housing Planning Project. And there's a program where you apply, and it really is just a one-page application. In order to apply for the, well, actually, we're looking for two applications, one working with the county and the other cities in the county to get, to apply for a grant to assess the housing policies and implementation strategies in the various cities within the county, to evaluate and update the urban service area agreements between the county and the cities, which actually, if we get it, would be a real impetus to actually have one between the city and the county. And then to identify specific housing initiatives that can be implemented on a regional basis. And that's a cooperative grant request. The other one we're looking at is to get a code audit, to review our code, to look at things that might be, to identify permitting requirement and processes that might be barriers to housing development in the city. I particularly like that because, you know, we work with the code all the time, and we actually may be blind to things that are there, and getting an outside look at it would be very helpful. All I'm asking of you to do tonight is to authorize the mayor to sign a letter of support on the county application, and to sign our authorization to apply for one for the city. There's no match for either of these. And actually, to be honest, I have no idea how much money they may actually grant to do these things. It's just saying, they've gone out and said, we have some money, send an application, and it's literally a one-page thing, is we want to do a code audit. They will provide a consultant to do that at whatever cost it is. So I'm just asking again for you to authorize the mayor to sign the applications, or a letter of support in the case of the county one.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you. And then you also have a note at the bottom. We're starting our commercial design standards project. We're establishing a project advisory committee. We're looking for a couple of members who have architecture experience.
Yeah, that's right. Thank you for that.
The commitment would be for three meetings over the next few months. Anyone who's interested should contact the planning department.
We're looking, if you know of somebody, or just get the word out, we're looking for architect or required retired architect or whatever to help out with our project advisory committee.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it, Richard. All right. Now, we are at city manager, city attorney reports.
Nothing from me.
Hey. Mr. Capitello. Wonderful. Not that we don't want to hear from you. It's going on nine. Okay. Actions, if any, based on work session or executive session?
Mr. Mayor, I've got a motion to move to direct the city manager and the city attorney to submit a revised offer followed by a purchase and sale agreement and associated documents to the school, Lincoln County School District, with appropriate contingencies to protect the city as discussed in executive session. Further move the, to, further move the authorize the city manager and city attorney to execute all documents necessary to follow through with the agreement.
Second.
Motion to second. Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call.
Hoagland?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Wilkie?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
And Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Additional comments from citizens present on non-agenda items? Anyone who would like to come up before the council? Seeing no one. I had that twice. Okay, there we go. All right, so we're going to go to announcements or comments by city council.
I have a few. Just wanted to mention two new places that I've noticed in town to eat or go to, Odeleine Lanes, where the old bowling alley is. I haven't been there yet, but I heard it's pretty nice, and, although I think it's closed on Sundays, somebody told me, so they, they went to go there and it was closed. I'm not too sure.
They're closed on Mondays, too, just like their other restaurant was, but...
Sunday morning from the audience, thank you. So, I've heard good things, wish them the best of luck. Also, where they used to be is now called Thai Me Up. I have not also eaten there, but I'd like to mention them.
And Thai Me Up is T-H-A-I.
As in Thai food.
Yeah.
Not the other, or the other. It's not a tie-dye place. And at Trillium Natural Foods, if you bike or walk there for the month of June, you get a 7% discount. They also give you a cash discount if you pay with cash, so, or check. But, for the month of June, they have a special if you walk or bike there. Just like to mention that.
If you park at the post office.[1514.13][1514.13](laughter)
Hey, you don't show up in a car. Watch this guy.[1519.01][1519.01](laughter)
Okay, good. Anyone else?
Yeah, I have a couple of things. When we were discussing the exemption from the competitive bidding, I knew I'd read that we hadn't done something before, and I just was confused. What I had read was the city has not previously used the CMGC process before.
I see.
Yeah, finally found what my memory nagging on me. And I just want to say that I was very disappointed in the state of our agenda for tonight, and I really hope that next meeting it's cleaned up. Thank you.
That's what I was going to say.
You can say it, too.
Yeah, this was, this was quite the loop-de-loop. Yeah, anyone else from here? I don't have a lot other than, I guess I want to, I want to talk about, I forget who, I think it was Mr. Homebaum had, around, had written something about the procedures we went through at the Budget Committee meeting, where everything was just kind of crammed in, and it, I felt the pressure to just, okay, it's going up on midnight here, let's just get things done. And I don't know how we prepare for that next time, or the next Budget Committee prepares for it, so that we're not forced into that corner again.
There's a couple of things that we're checking on with the state. As you know, one of the state, one of the state requirements is that you cannot talk about the budget until the budget is actually presented. But, I had estimated that about 70% of the questions were not actually number-related. They were indirectly related, but they were more on how do we deliver services, rather than on the budget numbers themselves. So, one of the things that we're exploring with the state is can we have a meeting with the Budget Committee, say in November, to go through not the budget and not talk about any numbers, but just questions about the delivery of services, and hope, and answer those kind of questions upfront, so that we don't have to spend so much time when we're actually dealing with the numbers of the budget. And so, that's one we're checking with the state right now, with the Department of Revenue, to make sure that's okay.
What I ran into was the fact that there were all those, the motions, you know, a page of them, and I'm just wondering if there's a way to say, "Look, we can pretty much guess this is going to take until 12. Can that be split into two nights?" And I know that we were up against a schedule where we had to finish things, and that's where I'm just wondering, could it, it's just a discussion for next year.
Well, yes, it, it, yes, and it should be a discussion for next year, but it still comes back to the same thing. By the time we were finished with the night, that evening, we had already put in 13 to 14 hours worth of work into it. If we can shorten that part of it...
Staff, that was brutal.
If we can shorten that part of it, then, then perhaps we can make those, make those run a little bit smoother. The other question that came up during the Budget Committee, and I'm not sure how to deal with this one, is that how do you decide what gets, what goes in first as far as the various questions? And, and other than pulling things out of a hat, I don't really quite know how to do that, but, but that was another concern that came up that we'll try to address next year.
Okay. Well, I don't have anything else for the group, so may God bless you all, may God bless Lincoln City. We are adjourned.[1750.88][1750.88](knock on door)
Or as they say, explore.
Explore Lincoln City.